We are back for our city council meeting this evening. We had at 6:00 PM a presentation from Montgomery Housing Partnership of the Hillwood Manor Project, and we took a short break, and now we're back to continue our meeting. For our agenda moving forward, we have a meeting on next week, Wednesday, July 21st. It will begin at 7:30. This is our regular council meeting. Our voting session that evening will include the second reading ordinance awarding a contract for consulting services for redistricting, first reading ordinance approving the FY2022 Budget Amendment Number One, first reading ordinance approving the FY2022 Stormwater Budget Amendment Number One, first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the purchasing order. We have a resolution regarding the subdivision of 7402 Garland Avenue, resolution approving FY22 Wage Adjustment for Staff Represented by the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 400, and a resolution approving FY22 Wage Adjustments for Non-Unit Union Represented Staff. Our work sessions that evening will include a contract for sports officiating services, discussion of committees, discussion of continuation of Laurel Avenue Streetery, and update on appointments to the 2021-2022 Youth Council. And then on Wednesday, July 28th, we'll have our regular city council meeting that will begin at 7:30. We have a resolution authorizing submittal of MML Legislative Action Request, second reading ordinance approving the FY2022 Budget Amendment One, second reading ordinance approving FY2022 Stormwater Budget Amendment Number One, second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the purchasing order, single reading ordinance approving a contract for sports officiating services, a resolution providing for appointments to the youth council, resolution providing for city council summer recess, and a discussion of committees. And then the city council will be on recess for the month of August, and our first meeting back will be on Wednesday, September 8th. So those are upcoming agenda items. We'll turn now to public comments, and I believe we have Mr. Hubner is up first.
Mr. Hubner should be with us. Mr. Hubner, you should be able to unmute yourself and be on camera if you wish.
Okay, there it is. Thank you, Jesse. Say when. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well, staying cool in the heat. Shall I start, Jesse?
Hello? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't know. Paul Hubner, Ward 3. "I'm here to appeal to the better instincts of all the council members who believe in ethically-based, responsive, service-oriented, and fiscally-sustainable government. Do not vote for the $50,000 no oversight spending proposal. This has way too much authority for the new and untested city manager. If the current system of oversight is really so unwieldy, then come up with a better way to review and approve changes, but do not relinquish your authority of review. Our current charter already limits the council's power excessively. We should fix that. That's what so many residents want, that the council have more authority over programs and the staff less. Do not give up still more of your already limited power in this way. There are many examples I can think of where council members have had to ask the city manager during council meetings for services to be rendered to residents. At the very least, as some council members have already discussed, you should demand documentation of how many requests were made or submitted within each dollar amount range from $10,000 to $20,000, $20,000 to $30,000, $30,000 to $40,000, and $40,000 to $50,000. Documentation should include the eventual disposition of each request and how long it took after request from start to approval. If it takes up to three months, perhaps the staff is not current on their weekly and monthly look-aheads, and should be more knowledgeable about how fiduciary responsibilities dictate planning and scheduling, something that has been consistently missing throughout the entire last administration. Most importantly, do not relinquish additional fiscal authority to any city staff below the city manager level. Another interesting issue that arose last week to great surprise was an acknowledgement by the deputy city manager that she was not doing her currently required fiscal oversight. This is hardly the time to grant more power to her or anyone in that post to act without council supervision. To the contrary, the council should demand a full accounting and institute the time-on-task program for all city staff. I hope you will not be fooled. This proposal is nothing less than a total financial reauthorization process. It's out of order that be brought forward by a short-term, temporarily-assigned, non-resident employee. And this is not the time to implement such a dramatic change, while the council will be on vacation for over a month and just before the arrival of a new city manager. Furthermore, this proposal should require a citywide referendum, because it entails a near-total rewrite of the city code, delegation of legislative authority to the executive branch, and feels to me like truly a breach of council's fiduciary responsibility."
Thank you, Mr. Hubner.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Machuwi with us.
She should be here. I saw her a moment ago. Ms. Machuwi?
I thought I saw her.
Yeah. I don't see her now. I'm sorry.
No, I don't see you. She's not listed in the...
No.
All right. Well, if she comes back on, we can turn to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilman Kostic.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. First of all, I've been... I asked residents in the SS Carroll and nearby neighborhoods for their thoughts related to the Lincoln-Carroll Avenue intersection, since there was another crash there, luckily not a particularly serious one recently. And, you know, this is an intersection that we've long been wanting to get improved and have had trouble getting S.H.A. on board with doing that, and we're circulating information to try to just gather information from folks about problems they're seeing at that intersection and ideas people have for possible improvements, either working with S.H.A. or if there are things we as a city could do on the city streets. So I've been collecting a lot of information from residents, and it's really been, I think, a great discussion, mostly over email with residents about that intersection, and I'm hoping to share that next week after I gather the final input from people this week and can share that with city staff and happy to talk it through with all of you as well. I think there are some really good ideas about things that might possibly work there. And it's also brought up some additional concerns about intersections at Lincoln and Jefferson, and Jefferson and Carroll as well, which are also very dangerous and difficult intersections themselves. In a nearby area, we've been having sidewalk work done on Carroll Avenue in the area from Lincoln up towards the junction, and it's great to see that moving forward. Appreciate the work that Public Works has done to coordinate for that work to be happening. I know some of my colleagues have been attending, and myself as well, the National League of Cities Conference, virtual conference over the past couple of days. Today, the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee I'm a part of met for a couple of hours and had some really great discussions about ARPA fund use and specifically focused on early childhood and supports for children as well as mental health. And so I have some materials I will share with everyone that came out of that. I will say, one of the things related to early childhood that was brought up was the ways that cities can help connect families to the child tax credit, and so there's some information about that. And for mental health, there was a discussion about the increased funding from the federal level coming for mental health and the opportunities now to potentially seek assistance from the state and other sources that might not have existed in the past. So I think there might be some good opportunities there as well for us to look into. And then finally, I just want to remind folks that we've discussed this a couple of times with the Transportation Planning Board, voted last month to remove the M.I270 project from the Long Range Plan, and there have been a number of discussions over email since then. It looks like we will be taking up next Wednesday some discussion and possible decision point on that again. It's my intention to vote to continue to keep that project out of the Long Range Plan, but I understand there are some who have changed their mind and have different perspectives on things since they've gotten additional information on it, so I'm not sure how that vote will look. I have been getting a lot of emails from people throughout the region, from Tacoma Park mostly, through a, what seems like a somewhat automatic auto-action alert website, who have been asking for TPB members to add the project back in. So if people have a different opinion and would like to keep the project out of the Long Range Plan, I really encourage you to contact the Transportation Planning Board members to really urge them to do that, because I think it's helpful to hear from people who have that perspective as well. I think that's it for me tonight, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. I think I'll go to Councilman Sirci.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I just want to, again, thank the Public Safety Task Force. Last night, the council received a presentation from the group, and as they walked through their 55 zero recommendations for the council in order to move forward on addressing public safety throughout our community. So I want to thank again all of those who participated in the process, as well as our consultants, Link, and Expectant Advisory. I always butcher that name. So again, I just want to, for those that are interested, encourage you to take a look at the report that has been posted on the website, as well as listen in on the conversation that happened last night. I think the conversation is really helpful, because it provides a little bit more of some of the back and forth that members of the task force had and how they had to reach compromise, and in some places where they had differences of opinion. And I look forward to continuing to work with the council and staff on working to address those recommendations. So thank you all so much. On Thursday, had the opportunity with the Director of Public Works to have our first of two. Unfortunately, we had a little scheduling mishap of the community meetings regarding sidewalk requests in public and traffic calming for the Hopewell-Larch and Kentland neighborhood. So we will have another meeting this Thursday, and so just wanted to make sure that folks knew, and I'll send out a reminder email to the group, that we will have another meeting on tomorrow, and I believe that will be at 7:30, but I'll send an email just to confirm. Also, just want to remind people about the farmer's market on Wednesdays on Ann Street. I feel like I say it all the time, but you don't know what you're missing out on if you don't go. So there are so many wonderful vendors. This week, they had cherries. There's apricots that were delicious. Of course, Brazilian Bakery was there. I was able to get some of the last standing churros, which I was excited about, and there was a vendor that had beautiful floral arrangements. So I was able to get some flowers to kind of liven up my house and some indoors a lot. So I do just want to encourage folks to check out the Crossroads Farmer's Market on Wednesdays on Ann Street, and that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Great. Councilman Dibala.
Yeah, so I'd like to point out that Mary Jean Machuwi has joined us.
Yes, I know that. I just was trying to decide whether or not to interrupt.
All right, so do council comments first and then double back for...
That's what I decided, so.
Okay, just let her just check it in there. Thank you. A few things. On the National League Cities front, I'm on the Energy and Environment Committee. We met today for a couple hours, talked about a number of things, and in particulars, had a really fascinating panel on how the infrastructure bill might be able to help with EV vehicles, electric vehicles, charging infrastructure, and particularly with a focus on what works in local government, what works in cities. So that was great. And there was also an ARPA presentation from a city in Oregon that's not a whole lot bigger than us, that showed, they showed sort of their whole, well, how are they thinking about it and what the steps are to get to their plan, and I thought that was good, and I've already circulated the slides on that, I think. Next week, I'll be going to the MML meetings virtually and trying to knock off a couple of academy classes for my academy training certification. Next week, on Tuesday, for those who are interested in county climate issues, the county council is having a hearing on the Building Performance Standards Bill that's in front of them. The mayor will be testifying for Tacoma Park. Thank you very much, Mayor. And for people who may, just to remind everyone that that's a key piece of the climate framework for our city, one of the things that we felt was really important to get done. So I'm looking forward to that. And last but not least, we'll get to Garland Avenue later tonight, but I am getting calls from volunteers in that part of the city. If anybody else wants to get on the volunteer list for eventual construction later this fall to do, to help with habitats project, that'd be great, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be quick. Number one, I just wanted to also repeat what Councilmember Sirci said, just in terms of thanking the participants and the reimagining Public Safety Task Force who made a great presentation to us yesterday. I'm still working through all the recommendations, but I think it's a lot of information that we'll really be able to spend a good amount of time on, trying to figure out how to move forward with it. So I just wanted to thank them. I don't know whether the deputy city manager was planning to mention this, but there is a coffee with a cop meeting coming up tomorrow from 9:00 to 11:00 at Tacoma Bedco and Laurel Avenue, so it's a chance to mingle informally with members of the police department. So that's something people can take a look at. And also, I did receive an email. It's the fifth anniversary of Tacoma Radio, WOWD, and they're actually going to be broadcasting between 1:00 and 8:00 PM this Saturday in the streetery area over Laurel Avenue as well. So if you like watching radio broadcasts being made as opposed to listening to them, but I suppose maybe getting a chance to talk to some of the people involved with the radio, that's from 1:00 to 8:00 PM on this Saturday. And just two other things. Councilmember Kostic mentioned the TPB vote that's coming up, and I think it's great that she's sticking with that vote, of course. I will mention, I've received some of those emails, sort of programmed emails, asking for a change in the vote. I've also received some from another group in support of it. So just for what it's worth, both of those are out there, and there's quite a bit of activity going around. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, and I have spoken with staff and the mayor about this, there's been a certain amount of email traffic in Ward 1 concerning the stormwater fee, and I think it would be helpful if we could get from staff a breakdown on how many appeals it looks like we're getting and what the process is for that and what we're seeing in terms of differences, because one of the things that's come up, of course, in a big project of this type, there's an anticipation that there may be some inaccurate information. That's the reason we've got the appeal process. But obviously, if we're seeing a trend of a lot of big divergences from what's in the data that people have received as opposed to a small number of minor adjustments, it would be really important to note that. And, you know, maybe early in the process, but I'd really like to see if we can get some data in a sense for how that's going, so we can assess whether the appeal process and structure will be effective. So I pass that we, it doesn't literally have to be in this meeting tonight, but if we can get that information, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Machuwi, would you like to go now? Ms. Machuwi, if you're talking, I think you're muted.
Unmuted, it said.
Okay, now you're good. We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Yes. Happy best still day. I have French roots on my mother's side. I just wanted to say, I know you are trying to get rid of me and my son, and we're trying to find another place. Someone told me at a disability conference that there's some country where people with autism are treated as if they were gifts, and I want to find out where that is and move there, because I certainly haven't found that here, and I am very sorry. Goodbye.
Thank you, Ms. Machuwi. I'll turn it over to the acting city manager.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start, as always, with our COVID-19 effort update. We continue to update our COVID-19 dashboard each week, and we continue to have good news, and we encourage you to check out the dashboard if you haven't already. Over the past week, there were no new cases of COVID-19 reported in Tacoma Park. In all of June, only three new cases of COVID-19 were reported, which makes June having the fewest new cases of any month since the start of the pandemic. The last month where new cases were this low was back in March 2020, so that's very encouraging news. And also, as of this week, 80% of our residents have received at least the first dose, and as I mentioned last week, we've already passed the 70% fully vaccinated milestone here in the city. So we continue, again, thanks to the good news that we're going to keep monitoring those key metrics, but we are on pace for our phase reopening timeline. So currently, Public Works, the Police Department, and Library are open to the public. We have passport and notary services available by appointment, and masks are required in public areas of city facilities. We are planning for a full reopening of all city facilities, including the Community Center and Recreation Center on August 23rd, and I'll have more to share on that soon. We continue to encourage residents to get vaccinated so we can reach 100%. I wanted to provide an update as to what free vaccinations are available in your area. So as always, you can go to www.montgomerycountymaryland.gov to sign up for appointments at various locations throughout the county, but I did want to highlight that the Montgomery County Department of Health Latino Health Initiative is partnering with the Maryland Vaccine Equity Task Force to bring a vaccination clinic to the Americana Grocery of Maryland on Piney Branch Road that will be tomorrow, as well as the 20th and the 22nd, from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. We also have FEMA's mobile vaccine trailer is returning to Washington Adventist University. They actually were there today, and they'll be there through July 18th. During the week, they're there 11:00 to 7:00 PM, and then on Saturday and Sunday, they'll be there from 9:00 to 5:00 PM. I also wanted to highlight that next Wednesday, there'll be vaccinations available at the Crossroads Farmer's Market, and that'll be from 10:30 to 2:30 PM. Applications are still open for our Tacoma Park Youth Council. The deadline is two days from now, and again, that's open to all Tacoma Park teens ages seven to 12 for the 2021 and 2022 school year. And as a member of our youth council, you will inform the Tacoma Park City Government of the needs and wishes of teenagers in Tacoma Park. You'll help us plan and implement social, educational, cultural, and recreational activities for teenagers, and you'll work with the mayor, city council, and city staff to provide service and leadership opportunities for other teenagers in the city. And we can take up to 11 members, and so we encourage you to apply if you haven't already in the next two days. I also wanted to provide an update on street resurfacing. So as you may have noticed, we resurfaced five main streets in the city. Last week, we... Uh, last week we were able to reinstall stock bars, crosswalks, speed bump markings. And we expect center dividers to be completed by the end of this week, as long as the weather holds out. And speed bump reinstallation is still pending scheduling, but that'll be, uh, the final finishing touch for our street resurfacing. As Councilwoman Kovar mentioned, there have been a lot of questions about our stormwater fee notice. And so I did want to just kind of, um, review that for a moment. So all single family property owners in the city should have received in the mail a brochure on the new stormwater fee for your home. That fee is based on the amount of impervious area and will appear on your property tax bill. This summer, our public work staff is, is make, working hard to finalize each property's fee and correct any errors in mapping or math. Um, but it's important to note that the stormwater femaleer has information about how we assess the impervious area for your property. And our data on impervious area types and sizes comes directly from Montgomery County's parcel data that, which comes from tax records and then also planometric data based on G I S aerial imagery. So that's really the best data available. And more information about fee calculation and the mapping of impervious area can be found on our stormwater webpage, which I've linked in my comments. And our public work staff also reference state tax data and maps. If you do think there's been an error with your fee calculation, such as, um, the square feet of the impervious area, um, our public works team can schedule a site visit if needed to confirm your measurements. Um, in some cases, what we're seeing is that it's a property line error, um, in which case you'd have to correct that directly with Montgomery County. Um, but there's an application for corrections that is also on our stormwater webpage. Um, and if you have any questions at all, you can reach out to publicworks@tacoma park maryland.gov or call 301-891-7633. As several council members mentioned, we heard the reimagining public safety task force present their report.
Could I, could I just follow up with a question about the?
Yes.
The, I, I didn't realize you were, you were stopping in just a moment. So I think there's a distinction between if there's a, um, square footage miscalculation or error or allegation thereof on someone's property and that can be dealt with through the normal, um, appeal process. I think when it comes to these boundary questions where, and it sounds like what you're saying is potentially the county information doesn't match up with other property records. And so that's, you know, normally we're relying on the county for that. I guess what I'm curious is what we think the incidence of that is how, how common that is, number one. But number two, since that involves having to get a correction from the county, can the people in that situation, if they have to do that, potentially get more time to do the appeal?
I think that's a great question, Councilman Kovar. I mean, I, I do know from speaking with our public works director earlier today that I think we sent out about three, 3,800 mailers and only about 14 have come back um, with requests to double check the calculation. Um, and I think only three or four of those have required a site visit. So, um, public works is monitoring this, uh, closely. Our public works director will be on later this evening. Um, but we can certainly provide, um, additional information if, if you have kind of a rare, um, correction, we can certainly.
My sense is in sifting through the, um, the online comments that, that there's more to come still. And obviously if there's only 14, that's great, but we'll have to see. So, but I think to me, I see a distinction between, you know, something right, the patio on the, on the property is miscalculated. Okay, that's one thing. But if the boundaries of the plat or the, or the map are wrong, and that's a recording problem at the county, then it just feels like it's going to be much more complicated to get that, uh, addressed. And so I, I, I think we may need to look into that. And it depends. If there's only 14, my sense is there's more.
Sure. Yeah. And, and like I said, um, don't hesitate to reach out to public works. We're working case by case, um, through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeBala, did you have anything on stormwater or?
Yes, I was just going to suggest that if it's a question of the county map online and somebody's plat map disagreeing, that we could perhaps consider giving them the benefit of the doubt till they get the county process worked out as an alternative to giving them a pass till the county works out. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. And I'm, I, yeah, I don't fully know what the, oh, here's Daryl. She might have a comment, um, but I'm, I'm not sure what the correction, you know, how long the correction process through the county takes. Um, but I also don't know that it's, I'll let Daryl speak to it.
Yeah, we're just assuming it's going to take a long time. That's right. That's fair to them.
There's, there's a lot of unknown, of course, in, in a, a new program rollout. Uh, one of the things I want to clarify is, uh, as you may recall, when the council discussed this, um, we had a deadline for providing the tax information for the stormwater fee to the county of June 1st. So, uh, using the, uh, county data, the city has submitted all the stormwater fee information. And in fact, just today, I, I got my, uh, property tax bill from the county. So they, they bill in July. The initial bill is September and, and December. So people should start seeing those county, uh, county generated, uh, tax bills, which will include the Tacoma Park special is, uh, I, I love that title. And that's how the stormwater bill shows up. So the, uh, billing has already been, uh, prepared and created for the county. For those properties where there is an error, there really isn't a, a deadline or a timeframe. When we discussed this with the council, we established a four-month period for the initial year for people to, um, submit requests for correction. Um, in, in, in contrast to once this program is, is well entrenched, there's a 30-day period from time of notice or time of the tax bill. So, um, there'll be plenty of time for people, um, to ask the city to uh, review the information, uh, that we have. Um, and if there's cases where the, um, information that the county has is incorrect, uh, we'll advocate, uh, for those residents, but they will have to be in touch with the county directly to request corrections on their tax bill. The data that the county uses is state-generated as well as county-generated and, uh, updated every three years with, um, the aerial, the LIDAR, the planometric details. Um, so we'll continue to gather more information as we look through cases, um, and happy to update people. Um, we are definitely, um, encouraging anybody who has a question to give us a call and we'll talk through it. Uh, there's no, no loss, no punitive action, no negative, uh, results. Uh, happy to, uh, review the information on a property by property basis. Um, we've just started the site visits today. Um, so we, you know, really don't have much data to go by. Um, initial calculations are showing that most of those are correct. There are, uh, I'm sure will be cases where it's not. And we will, for those cases, since the bill has already been submitted to the county, the city will refund the difference to the property owners over the course, um, of the year as the, you know, issue becomes identified and, and available. So there's no deadline, no pressure. Um, we're, we're just learning from the process and, um, happy to provide additional information to anybody who has questions or, or is concerned or, or misinformed. I just also would like to remind folks that the, the city will be establishing a credit program. We couldn't do that in the initial year of rollout. So for those property owners who have installed dry wells or a green roof or a bio retention facility or a permeable surface to capture rainwater, uh, we always would encourage that. And we'll have a program in the next billing cycle. Um, the ordinance that the ca, uh, council passed sets up October as the deadline for regulations to be developed for that credit program. So we'll be working on that shortly to establish the credit program and the regulations. We'll have that out this fall. And then next year's billing cycle will, uh, thankfully be able to start a little earlier. Uh, so we won't be quite as close to the June 1st deadline when we can notify people of, of the, uh, credit program and options. Uh, so that's something that'll be, um, initiated in year two of the new stormwater fee.
Thanks.
So the only other thing I would say is, you know, if it is a situation where the error is by the county or the county information is off, then in that situation, having a lot of the burden beyond the residents isn't really the direction that to me seems like we want to go. And so, and Councilmember DeBala mentioned, you know, giving them the benefit of the doubt potentially in this first year, but it turns out that there's a lot of these. So I'd like us to at least consider that because to me that, again, not to harp on, but there's a distinction between something in the property where the calculation is off and something where the boundaries of your property itself are off. And that's, um, that to me, asking people to go to a lot of trouble to get that corrected, even if that's the only way to do it, seems more bothersome to me.
Sure. Well, we can't, uh, we don't have control over the county process or the county data. Um, so that's going to be very important for people to get clarified with the county, particularly since it has tax implications for them going forward if there's an error. And we'll, uh, be able to provide any additional information and guidance for them. Uh, but if they want to challenge the county's records, they of course will need to do that directly. We can't do that for them. Um, so there, you know, there'll be a process that the county will have for that and, um, and we'll certainly help facilitate, um, letting people know which office to contact and the best way to do it.
Well, yeah, I think that's.
I just, I'm sorry. I, we have a very large, long agenda this evening. Um, I just, I think we could ask Ms. Braithway to come back with a report. The stormwater, this was not on our agenda. And I understand there's a lot of questions. Um, but I, I just asked Councilmember Kovar that we, we do have a quite extensive.
Well, I will stop. I'll just say one more sentence, which is having us tell them exactly where and how to do that to the county would be helpful. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Braithway can come back and give us a full report. And if it does seem to be more than the 14 people that now have reported appeals and whatever percentage of those folks do need to go to the county, maybe there's some way we can bundle all of those and advocate at the county level for some process to review those. So why don't, why don't we actually find out how big of an issue this is, um, and then look for solutions to that? So, great.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Kovar.
Continue your, yeah.
Yep. So I just wanted to, um, again, thank the reimagining public safety task force. And to highlight that there's a lot of material on the city website, not just their final report, but all of the resources and documents that they referenced throughout their process. And those are available on our reimagining public safety task force webpage on the city website. And, uh, city staff look forward to continuing the important work started by the task force in the coming months um, in partnership with city council. And then finally, I wanted to announce that our finance department has done it again. Um, Government Finance Office Association has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program. And it's the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. So we thank our finance department for their continued excellence in financial reporting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that update. Um, we'll move now to our, uh, agenda items. Our first one is our voting session. Uh, we are, no, yes, our voting item, sorry, I skipped down um, too quickly. Our voting session is the first reading ordinance awarding a contract for consulting services for redistricting. Um, we had a, um, work session on this last week. And I don't know if the, uh, city clerk has any other information or anything to say regarding, um, this vote tonight.
I don't in particular. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I did want to point out there is a minor typo on the, um, cover memo. It refers to flow analytics, working with the firm Bloom Communications. The firm is actually Bloom Planning and we'll have that corrected for second reading. Um, I wanted to, I guess I will go ahead and point out that the, um, the proposal from Flow Analytics includes their partnering with Bloom Planning for the outreach and engagement portion of the project. Bloom is a strategic planning firm based in Philadelphia. Flow and Bloom together have experience with community facilitation in diverse communities out, um, at local county and state scales, including Hartford County, Maryland, school redistricting, Philadelphia P A school redistricting and redistricting in Camden, New Jersey. Um, Bloom Planning has managed community engagement for the Pennsylvania State Health Assessment. Um, when we start the project, Flow and Bloom, uh, the community engagement process, they will work with city staff and council and reach out to community leaders and stakeholders who can provide more direct knowledge and control over the redistricting process to make sure our diverse populations are heard and represented. And, um, naturally we expect to use the lessons learned from the Brickens Story Recreation Center engagement process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it.
Great. Thank you. Um, would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Cersei moved, Councilwoman DeBala second. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Now we will move on to our work sessions and I will pull up the presentation that I had before. Um, and we have Alex Friedman, uh, planner from our Housing and Community Development, um, office, uh, with us today to talk about, uh, the subdivision on Garland Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight I am going to, uh, present about the subdivision on Garland Avenue. And I've got some slides that we'll pull up right now. All right. So, um, tonight we are talking about the property at 7402 Garland Ave. And, um, I'm going to start tonight's presentation with just a quick review of the project, uh, timeline of sort of where it's been and where we're taking it to in the next couple of steps. And then, um, I'll go over what we're kind of talking about tonight in more detail. And then we also have, um, some representatives from Habitat for Humanity with us this evening, who will be available also, um, to answer questions at the end in addition to myself. So, um, to begin, uh, last fall in 2020, the property at 7402 Garland Ave was put up for sale by its owner. And the property was, oop, I gotta move my slides forward. Um, the property was originally built as a single-family home, but was later converted to a three-unit residential building. So right now the property is zoned as R40, which is the zoning code that allows residential properties to be built as duplex style homes. Um, so the property was purchased by Habitat for Humanity for $510,000 with the intent to develop it into two residential units under a shared equity homeownership model as a way to create more accessible housing opportunities in the city. So today I am presenting about the current stage in what is now considered an otherwise pretty standard development review process. The applicant Habitat for Humanity has applied to the county to subdivide the property into two parcels to accommodate the duplex style development that they are planning. So, today, well, uh, so the meeting today is to review the applicant subdivision application as part of their application process to the county. And the project has already been before city council on multiple occasions. And so I wanted to review, um, some of that history to now. So first on September 11th and 2020, the city of Tacoma Park initiated the city's tenant opportunity opportunity to purchase law process, which gives the city the first right of refusal on the purchase of rental properties should tenants of a rental property not opt to exercise their own first right of refusal on the sale. The tenants refused their right, so the city formally expressed intent to buy to the owner with a plan to transfer their right of refusal to Habitat for Humanity. Then on September 23rd, city council passed, uh, ordinance 202026, authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with Habitat for Humanity to transfer the rights over and also dedicate $200,000 from the housing reserve fund to support affordable housing stock with the, sorry, to support the sale. Um, and the rationale was that, uh, the project aligns with the city's goal to preserve affordable housing stock and help provide missing middle homeownership opportunities. So then, on May 18th, well, in between then and now, Habitat for Humanity successfully purchased the property for $510,000. And on May 18th, they submitted a subdivision application to the county for review. And the subdivision of the property would allow Habitat for Humanity to realize the vision for the development of this property, which has already been approved by city council. Then Habitat for Humanity, well, so that brings us to today. We have our first work session, and then coming up next week, we'll have our voting session for this issue. At present, Habitat for Humanity fully owns the property, and the project is going through the same development review process that would apply to any private developer seeking to subdivide a property. So as part of this standard development review process, we are now at the first of the two city council sessions to review the proposal. So that takes me to what looks like a fairly complicated picture. This here is the site, the preliminary site plan that was submitted by the applicant. And for the audience members at home who are less familiar with what a site plan looks like, it is an overhead map of the property. And on the left side, it's a little zoomed out. And for the purpose of tonight, the most important part to focus on is the dotted lines, because really, tonight's discussion focuses on the subdivision of the property into two pieces. As, as it is proposed, this middle dotted line, note the blue box is the house, the existing structure on the property. That would be the proposed footprint moving forward. The proposed subdivision is this dotted line down the middle. And because of the sort of asymmetrical nature of where the current structure is placed, it is two similar but not exactly sized parcels. One, the one on the right, is about 5,600 square feet, and the one on the left, Lot B, is about 5,800 square feet. Otherwise, that's about the full extent of what we're considering today. This is the sort of proposed subdivision. And for those at home who are looking for a little bit more information about the project as it moves through its steps, I definitely encourage you to check out our website where we have a development review summary. It'll take you to the county's portal, which has full, full information about where the project is in its most current stages. But for now, I'm open to, I'd love to open up to any questions that the council might have. I also have a couple colleagues from the front Habitat for Humanity on the line that are available to answer questions that maybe are not related to the subdivision process itself. And thank you so much for allowing me to present.
Thank you, Alex. Councilman Dibala?
Yes, thank, thank you for the summary. And I'm pleased that this project is going, going to the next step here and going to the county planning board. I, I hope my colleagues will support the resolution that asks the county planning board to do this, because I think we should do it. I had one question about driveway. The last that I heard, there was still a question about where that second driveway was going to go. And could you just point to that for us on the site plan? So my colleagues, there's already one pullout, because there had been one already. And so for the second property to match the rest of the neighborhood, the proposed site plan, I think, has a second driveway.
Yeah, so from the most recent site plan that's been submitted, you'll see, oop, sorry, it's. Okay. And you'll notice that on the right side of the screen, there's the existing driveway. And then on the left side, which is this big gray area, is a proposed second driveway. And I don't know if someone from the Habitat for Humanities team wants to comment further on that. But that's sort of what the plan right now suggests. And the next steps going through this process at the city level will be, once the subdivision is approved, then it goes before the city for its tree plan. And then following that is its stormwater management plan. So as far as implications to that from adding some additional paved surface, that will be taken under consideration.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I want to first say thank you, Alex, for the presentation. I am supportive of this project. What, do we know what happened to the tenants that were in the building? Did they find other rental housing in the city? And/or are they being considered to purchase one or both of these units?
That's something I would have to look into a little bit more. I don't know if any of our Habitat for Humanity folks on the line maybe have some more insights into that.
I think Councilwoman Dibala may know, actually.
Yeah, as, Councilmember Smith, as I recall, the building was vacant, that the, all of the tenants had moved. And I don't remember if they moved and then it went for sale, or if it went for sale and then they moved. But by the time Habitat got into it, they, there were no tenants. This is the very call.
Yeah, Sarah nodding her head.
And then for Habitat for Humanity, what is the timeline? When you think that these units will be available?
Thanks, Sarah Redinger with Habitat for Humanity. So we are hoping to start some preliminary construction work this September. We did pull a fence permit and an alteration permit with the county, so we can get things started at least. But I think we're looking at selling the units probably end of summer, early fall of 2022. And both the buyers actually have been identified already as well. And as soon as they finalize their stories with us, we'll be happy to share those with everyone as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilman Dibala, did you have something else? Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands or anything, which I take as a good sign. And I just want to say thank you to Alex for the presentation. And a huge thanks to John and Sarah from Habitat for Humanity. I think we're all really looking forward to this project. As Councilwoman Dibala said at the beginning of our meeting, a number of people have already getting ready to sign up to do the volunteer work. So, and I just want to say it was really a privilege to be on some of the calls that were the informational calls before people started to apply and look at the buildings and these homes. And so we're just really glad to have this partnership with you all and looking, looking forward to more. Great. So thank you very much. Thank you again, Alex. Sorry to, to make your Wednesday nights in July council meetings.
Not to worry, not to worry.
Second week in a row. So thank you again for the presentation. Now move on to our second work session, which is a discussion of legislative priorities. And I believe, yeah, there's Ann. We have Ann Seacott with us. And our acting city manager, I believe, has put together a PowerPoint for us. So I will turn it over. Actually, before I do that, the point of the conversation tonight is to start talking about our legislative priorities. The more urgent short-term need is for us to vote on our legislative action requests for MML. We get to put in up to three requests. That doesn't mean that that's all our legislative priorities, because in addition to what we put in for MML, we usually also have additional priorities for the city that we communicate not only to our D20 delegation, but to other members of the state legislature. So, but in the short term, our focus is thinking about what do we want to put in for the LAR request for MML? So now I will turn it over to Ann and Jessica.
Sure. So I think Jessie has the PowerPoint queued up, or City TV?
Actually, City TV has it.
All right. Thank you, John. So Ann, would you like to talk us through these?
I'm, I'm quite happy to. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're well. So in looking, in preparing the presentation tonight, we did a couple of things. And one is review some of the most recent past legislative requests that the city has made to MML, as well as looking at what MML's eventual priorities have been and what has succeeded in the last few years. We also reached out to the District 20 legislators to ask about what some of their priorities are. And so looking at what they are thinking, looking at some of the things that we have been supporting in the last few years and what it still remains to be done, we've come up with this list of potential issues to move forward with. As the mayor said, it's, you know, the city's limited to making three requests. So I think we'll, I'm actually not sure if this is, what, what the, the, we know that the, there's a deadline for when the legislative requests to MML need to be made. But I don't believe, and Jessica, tell me if I'm right or wrong about this, I don't believe the decisions have to be made tonight.
Correct. That's correct.
Just making sure, making sure. All right, so.
Ann, sorry to interrupt you. I will be asking council for a sense of direction, because we have to pass a resolution. So we want, we want to go into that resolution with a sense of what our top three are and not leave here tonight with 10 legislative priorities, because that's not going to be helpful.
And I, and I think that, you know, what, what the mayor said also around, this doesn't, whatever does, wherever that direction is, doesn't limit what the city is, is involved with in supporting and promoting. It's just a matter of figuring out what are the things that really fit best with being able to get the Maryland Municipal League on board. So going to the second slide, looking at housing issues. So I had a discussion with Delegate Janelle Wilkins, and there were a number of things that she thought would be worth pursuing. She had a piece of, she had several pieces of legislation in this last session. One of which, one that did not pass included a data collection provision. And the data collection, it, it's somewhat amazing, I think, to a lot of us, that there isn't more timely, more detailed and dynamic data available to, to anyone, to the public, to lawmakers, to planning departments, housing departments, et cetera. It takes a long time to get rather limited data. So there have been attempts the last two sessions to try to get some of that data collected. We think that that actually would be something that perhaps MML would be interested in, that municipalities should be interested in having that data, because it can, it can assist, I think, in a number of ways in terms of understanding who's facing eviction, you know, depending on some of the demographic data, the income data, things like that, as well as identify at a, hopefully, a very local zip code level, perhaps, where there are the highest numbers of evictions. It might help with identifying potentially poor housing. It might identify landlords that are maybe routinely not in compliance with certain things. So we think that that's a potentially important issue for MML. Also, the City of Tacoma Park has, as you all know very well, supported Delegate Wilkins' attempts. And we tried many years ago to make it a city, make it, make it happen at the city level. It's been tried now for a number of years at the county level to have, enact just cause legislation, just cause requirements before evictions can take place. And so the City of Baltimore passed a local bill around just cause. But it's not clear they actually have the authority to, to create or implement that, that law. So, so an idea is to pass some legislation that expressly gives, whether it would be both municipal and county governments, however that, that would take the form of, allow them, allow the ability for local just cause laws to pass. There also seemed to be a lot of interest this session on somehow shielding eviction records from either, mostly from, from creating bad credit reports, or there's an idea specific, that was really specific to COVID and during the public health emergencies, not counting, making sure that evictions don't count against people when they're trying to find housing. So there were, there was, there were several bills in to try to accomplish that. And now these were statewide bills. But it's something that Delegate Wilkins certainly wants to make sure continues to be pursued. And then finally, just overall, the need for more affordable housing and trying to work with the state and local governments to identify additional resources and, you know, identify some targets for additional affordable housing. So our, and of course, that's not the world of all housing issues, but the, these are the ones that we think are, perhaps have, have some of the greatest local interest. So do we want to take these one by one for questions?
Why don't we run through all of them and so people can see the, and I should say also, and I can't, and I can't remember if we said this, that Councilmember Kovar, Dibala, and I met with Ann and Jessica to, because we're the subcommittee of the council that works on legislative items to, to talk about some of these already. So, but why don't we go through all of them so people can see what, what is, what all is being proposed?
Great. So we'll go on to the next slide. And that is the very broad category of climate solutions. And looking back at what passed and didn't pass this past legislative session, and also looking at some, again, prior priorities of the city and MML. The bullets here include requiring the state housing department to develop and coordinate funding to, to support weatherization, energy efficiency. The second bullet is related, certainly it's about providing targets. And again, identifying, providing resources to improve energy efficiency, especially for low and middle-income housing and multifamily buildings. There was something that, that, there was some of this in the broader climate solutions now legislation and also separate legislation that Delegate Laura Charcutian had introduced as well. And then just sort of the, one of the main pieces of the, the big climate solutions bill from this last session was just even having the state establish aggressive targets. So that legislation will be coming back in 2022. And then we move on to transportation. So this one, you know, may still, there's still maybe some room for, for other ideas. But the main thing is overriding the veto of the Transit Safety and Investment Act legislation. That included the creation of a new program, the Purple Line Construction Zone Grant Program, and mandated a minimum amount of funding for it. So we, I talked to the sponsor of that legislation in the Senate. And, you know, they, it's early yet, according to him, to be thinking about what overrides they're going to do. But this one had overwhelming support in the legislature. And so it, you know, sort of, probably likely they will be doing an override of that. They're also, from Delegate Charcutian, she's thinking about some type of pedestrian safety legislation. But in, in. But in, in communicating with her this week, she just doesn't have it really well defined yet. And she said it will, she is anticipating it will be a statewide bill. And that, you know, whatever local government authorities would be allowed in there, we'd certainly make sure that municipalities were included. But she just, she, she said she just hasn't figured out yet exactly the, the details of, of what that will be. And then the last slide has, you know, others, other issues that we might want to consider. So flexibility and revenue generation is a perennial and is, is something that MML has from time to time supported. But it's generally pretty broad and, and unfortunately non-specific because I, I don't know what level of agreement there is across the state from the, all the municipalities as to what kind of additional opportunities, revenue generating opportunities there are. There is an issue that Delegate David Moon raised around election consolidation. And this has come up before, just in some discussions about trying to, you know, get the city ballot or the, the city's vote on to the state election ballot. And the, the problem that we've been told by the Board of Elections that ranked choice voting is what prohibits it, it, it seems to be a barrier. So I think there are some discussions taking place between city staff and Delegate Moon to try to figure out what that legislation might look like. And then finally, local control for small cell infrastructure. So this issue is one that has come up from time to time. There was a, evidently a, I'm, I'm not well versed in this, but I got some information from MML that there was a court decision that actually worked in favor of municipalities related to some of this local control, local authority. But that it, it seems to be something that is still very much undecided, undefined. And so that may be something that MML would be interested in continuing to pursue. And I think those, that's the end, isn't it?
That's the end.
Great. I don't know if folks have any thoughts on those. I think one of the things, and I think Councilmember Smith is still with us. One of the things I know in the past, because the MML legislative action requests are, you know, statewide. So I think one of the things when we've been successful is looking at those that do have a statewide impact of, on municipalities. So for example, some of the ones that we have, like the election one, we may want to advocate for. But I'm not sure if that would be a legislative action request for MML. Whereas I, I would strongly support us doing the housing and the climate change and pushing MML to, you know, look at those issues and take positions on them. And I think of the transportation ones, I'm not sure if those are the ones that, if, if we have enough there yet to actually put in a request on. So I don't know, Councilmember Smith, you have the most experience of us all on the MML Legislative Committee, if you had some thoughts.
I, I missed the last part of the presentation. I went to the restroom. I can say the election stuff, I don't have an opinion on that, but the housing, I do, I would say that we should support that, make that an LAR. Transportation's always tricky because the rural parts of Maryland don't, will see it as a priority. So it's hard to, to give all members of the board to support something like that. And climate change, I think we, we have a possibility with that because it affects everybody. And let me just, one last thing. The, the idea of giving local jurisdictions the right to, for, what was the first, the second bullet on housing, I think is a great idea because then we can challenge it eventually in court. Just cause, just cause.
Councilmember Divala.
Given that I worked on the subcommittee, do I get, do I get to comment now? I, I think it's important to push MML to follow up on the initiative that they studied last year on climate. So they've, that was a big win to get them to think about it at all. And it does affect everybody, as Councilmember Smith said. And I think it would be good to, to follow up on that. I think housing is very important. As, as much as I think that transit bill is important, I would love to see an override. I'm not sure it's ready for an MML legislative request. And I, I echo what the mayor said about remembering when we proposed other things that didn't have statewide implications, like the election consolidation that only applies to a few communities and got told basically that, yeah, this is great, but not for us at MML. So I wouldn't want to waste one of our slots by proposing, well, waste. I would prefer not to use one of our slots by proposing that. Yeah, thanks.
Next up is Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. I think my view would be similar. I would say definitely do the housing and the climate piece. And clearly those do apply statewide. On the override, my feeling is they'll probably override it anyway. And Purple Line seems more narrowly focused, crucial to us, but not something they're likely to go with the highway user revenue if they, if they do again. So to me, it would be housing and climate, and then a choice between the revenue and, and the cell tower issue. I think both of those are statewide. Maybe this is not a year when revenue is quite as big a deal since we have the ARPA funds. On the other hand, in terms of the cell tower issue, it may be that more of the action for us is at the county level than at the state level, since we've done our letter to the county. So I'm not sure how I would pick between those two, but to me, it would be housing and climate, and then one of those other two, either revenue or cell tower.
I, I will also say that we, we don't have to pick three. So that's just in thought. It's up to, it's up to three. And since, I feel like we're cheating, like not cheating, but like, we're like housing and then all these things.
And we kind of go.
Climate and then all these things. You know, it, we may be, and I'm not saying we don't have to, we don't pick three, but we may be in a stronger position doing those two, if, if we go in that direction. I just wanted to point that out. We don't have, we don't have to do three. Councilwoman Kostic.
Yeah, I think my, my perspective seems similar to what I've heard so far, which is that the housing and climate priorities make the most sense in terms of what we're pushing through, through MML. I also, that was my other question was, you know, it does seem like we have a number of items under each of those. So maybe it makes sense to kind of keep two big buckets, but have a number of things under each of those. Of course, I, you know, I do support the, the transportation ones as well. But I think, given Councilmember Smith's point as well about the rural jurisdictions and, and just the total applicability to, you know, getting support from MML, I think it makes sense to kind of focus on the ones we have the most chance of there. And to me, that seems like housing and climate.
Okay, Councilwoman Cersei.
Um, yeah, I think I'm echoing our colleagues. I think, you know, the Purple Line component, I, I quite frankly think is, has a strong enough momentum right now that we maybe don't need to, we could do lobbying, but maybe outside of other vehicles. Now, I do think though, when we're talking about housing and climate change and like 25 things underneath, I think that muddies the message. And I do think that we need to prioritize or identify, you know, limit the number of items underneath. The, I, I think affordable housing and the aspect of expanding affordable housing, I guess I am still sliding purple line around transit, is putting more money there, to me, makes perfect sense. And now might be a good time, given those ARPA dollars, to really hammer that home. That's a regional issue. I, I, I don't think that would be something that would be, quite frankly, a, a difficult sell through MML. So I, I, it might need to be broadened a little bit. So it's not just those, you know, to be more encompassing of rural communities. But that might be an area where, you know, us coming together might actually result in some money shelling out at the state level to help with the creation of more housing in the region. So again, I, I, I think that there is, you know, housing and, and climate change makes sense. I just think that we need to narrow things a little bit in order to, quite frankly, highlight the stuff that we think will likely get the biggest impact and likely get taken up.
And, and I think with that, one of the things under housing, particularly the data collection that council, that Delegate Janelle Wilkins has pushed forward, we may be able to add more there. Because in fact, Matthew Desmond, who wrote the book Evicted and now has created the, the platform and the website that analyzes the eviction data across the country, has said that Maryland is one of the worst. And actually, we are not included in a lot of the analyses that are done because we're not actually collecting the data that's needed. So I think that might actually help make the case for why that is needed and is a statewide issue. Councilmember Smith.
I would just add that, you know, with, if we go with climate and housing, I think it's best if we add as much as possible, different bullets, because it's a committee decision. And if we just focus on one thing, two things, a lot of things that are important to us won't be discussed by the committee. So if we want to, to push the committee to think about some of these other things, then we have to put as much as possible. Yes, are we trying to get over? Of course. But that's the only way these issues are going to be considered. Because a lot of municipalities, they submit LARs that will never be considered. So if we want to be leaders on these issues, we gotta, you know, come up with a Christmas tree.
Thank you. That's helpful. Councilmember Kovar, is that a new or old hand? Old hand. Okay, great. Anne, yeah?
Just real quick, Councilwoman Smith is, Councilwoman Smith, is it, is, does, does the MML process allow for that? That, that if there are multiple bullets under one LAR, they could potentially just take one, one or two pieces of one?
Yes, but whomever chairs the committee, and I don't think that has been released yet. Somebody's going to know, oh, Tacoma Park has submitted all these, you know, bullets within, within housing, right? And people, you know, say ha ha, and then the debate starts, right? It's not, no one's going to say, oh, well, we can't, you know, oh, Tacoma Park, what are you guys doing? It's more, we see what you're trying to get the committee to consider, so, all right.
So this could also be a way of like elevating the conversation on just cause and other things, so.
Yeah, because some people might, I mean, you know, from the general assembly level, yes, you know, Wilkinson's bills are discussed. But I don't know how much the committee is talking about just cause for their municipality. Because that's a different type of conversation.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, and maybe this is similar to what Councilmember Smith is saying, but if we list four or five things, it may say, well, three of those don't make sense, but this one does. If we only list one and they don't like it, then we might end up with nothing in there. So I may understand the point. You don't want to make it look like we're trying to circumvent their rules by asking for five different things. But, you know, I'd hate to just prioritize one, like helping near development or just cause, and have, for whatever reason, the makeup of the legislative committee doesn't like that one, and then we end up with nothing. So I, I'm more where Councilmember Smith is on in, in terms of, I understand Councilmember Cersei's point about prioritizing, but I think having several may, make it easier to get one than not.
The other thing is, we need the committee to think about big ideas because they're going to do highway user revenue. That's, that's going to happen. Because that issue has not been resolved, and it touches every municipality. But we need them to also think about something else big. Climate change and housing are, are in that category.
And, and Councilmember Smith, am I correct in that sometimes when a municipality has put in kind of a bigger idea like this, it may not become a legislative priority, but they do like a working group, I, I forget what it's called, but a study, is it a study area or something?
Yeah, they, that is up to whomever the chair is. But yeah, that is a possibility.
So going bigger and stuff like, and having a couple of things, showing that there are a couple of things happening in Annap, in Annapolis on it, might help push it if we don't get it as an action require, as an action, a study area. So that could also be helpful.
Yep.
Cool. All right, well, I think we're, we're coalescing around housing and climate change. And if folks, why don't we move forward with the resolution for those two? We can look at some of the wording. I know our city clerk is very good at these LAR requests and, and putting them in the appropriate form. And then if something does come up before we vote on this resolution, folks can bring it up to the rest of the council. But for the moment, let's focus on housing and climate. Sound good? Excellent. All right, moving right along. We have our continued discussion of the purchasing code, which we began last week. This week, we're beginning it a little earlier in the evening, which is good because it's pretty detailed. And we have our acting city manager, who's going to walk through it. And our city attorney is also joining us this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to, to both of them.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I gave a quick overview last Wednesday, but essentially, our task this evening is to go through a chapter of the code that has not been updated for, the, the main tenants of which have not been updated for about 20 years. So it is ambitious, but will be very helpful to city staff and to the general processes of the city if we're able to update this. I wanted to start with a PowerPoint presentation, just very short, to refresh people of what the key issues are this evening. And then we'll get right into scrolling through the amendments. So I'll share my screen one moment. So I wanted to, in two tables, show everyone the, the key amendments that we're proposing this evening. So currently, as the code is written, for purchases that are under $5,000 for professional services and under $10,000 for goods and services, staff are required to get three quotes that are approved by the city manager. And then if a purchase is over $5,000 for professional services and over $10,000 for goods and services, it requires competitive bidding and city council approval for that purchase. So $5,000 and $10,000 are the triggers for competitive bidding and for city council approval. What we want to move to is a more tiered structure that allows staff a little bit more efficiency and flexibility while preserving appropriate levels of approval. a little bit more efficiency and flexibility while preserving appropriate levels of approval that we've seen used as best practices in other cities. So what we're proposing is to remove the distinction between professional services and goods and services and simplify it and say that if purchases are less than or equal to ten thousand dollars, they have to be approved by the city manager or her designee. And staff are only required to make a reasonable effort to find the lowest cost purchase. So they no longer need to get three quotes as the code currently requires. So we can buy pens without having to get three quotes, which we think in twenty twenty one makes sense. The next uh range up would be that you would, if it's between ten thousand dollars and thirty thousand dollars, again, the city manager or her designee will approve. But at that point, you are required informally to get three quotes or proposals. Um and then the the new trigger for competitive bidding is thirty thousand dollars. And so for purchases between thirty thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars, the city manager will be approving selections through competitive bid. And then the new trigger that we're proposing for council approval is for purchases over fifty thousand dollars that are, of course, also competit- competitively bid. So current state and what we're proposing. So you can see um the difference there. And I did just want to highlight again that um this is a standard, what we're proposing is a standard breakdown. It's used in other cities. You can see that D C and Gaithersburg have, are obviously larger cities. They have bigger budgets. So they have possibly, you know, hi- higher thresholds um for council approval. Um, we're certainly not gonna increase ours to a million dollars or to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but they are allowing staff kind of uh less of administrative burden for lower cost purchases. And that's what we're trying to do, and that's a trend that we see across the country. And just one more time, just to remind everyone of what the process is gonna be as proposed for purchases that are fifty thousand dollars and over. Those purchases will go through all eight steps that are listed here. So we'll identify a need, we'll develop a cost estimate, we'll ask for that in the budget. Council will approve the budget. And if that's included in the budget, then we develop an R F P. We evaluate the bids, we draft an agenda item, council considers that agenda item via two reading ordinance. And then um, you know, our work's not done as city staff. We have to route the contract. Um, and then in terms of approving the invoices, administrative staff, uh department heads, deputy city manager, finance director, um as well as uh in some cases, the city manager are all involved towards the end of these steps. And again, the the red zone takes, can take anywhere from two to three months. And so for purchases that are below fifty thousand dollars that are still competitively bid, they will no longer have to go through steps five and six, highlighted in yellow. But they will still have to go through all of the other normal steps for competitively bitted purchases. And then finally, I just want to highlight something that did not come up last time. But for all purchases that are competitively bid, so as proposed, anything over thirty thousand dollars, we, as city staff, typically use a performance evaluate, I mean, a a bid evaluation sheet. And I actually use the redistricting contract as an example. So this was one of the ways that our panel of staff members who selected the contractor um made their choice. So just an example of kind of the levels of review and scrutiny that are still involved for uh purchases between thirty thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars um as proposed. All right, so now let me stop, let me uh actually pull up the, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. So if there's any questions now, as I pull up the actual amendment language, we can raise those, just give me one second, and I'm gonna pull up the track changed amendments. All right. So can everyone see that? Okay, so this is the beginning of the chapter. So we um Skip and his team have added in the ordinance language already. So there are really no edits or changes to that language to start. But Madam Mayor has proposed one key change that relates to strengthening the equity considerations in our purchasing code. Um, and so I'll let uh Madam Mayor speak to that a little bit now.
Great, uh thank you, Ms. Clark. So I think last week, as we were reviewing this, a number of um uh council members raised questions about, is there uh ways that we could um strengthen some of the language around what was being proposed on the social equity piece? So I I have uh sent around to my colleagues earlier this week, did a bunch of research looking at um what was available through the government alliance for racial equity, um as well as some other groups, um and looking at what other municipalities around the country um have been doing. Spoke to our city attorney, who can address this better than I can regarding the legal constraints that we're under. Particularly because we have not undertaken a disparity study. So there are certain things we can and cannot do in this area, and I also provided um some more background information on that. I also reached out to um Montgomery County's Chief Equity Officer to see if the county has undertaken steps uh in this area and in procurement and contracting. And at the moment, um they have not um done that, though they are looking at a disparity study in one of these areas, so, but haven't undertaken that yet. So with that, um there are some things later uh in the code that I uh proposed. The city attorney did review them as well as the city staff already. But to kick us off, um I would would like to propose this uh whereas clause in the resolution, which affirmantly states that we want to expand our efforts. And we'll have a legal definition of um M W B Es and uh that they would uh be participating in city contract and ensure that they are afforded fair and equitable opportunities to compete for city contracts and not face any unfair barriers. Anyway, that goes on there, but to actually put that in um the resolution, and then when we get to the other section, we can look at some of the things I'm suggesting for the city code at this time. But I don't know if the city attorney wanted to weigh in on what, basically what we can and cannot do in this area.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I i- i- the mayor summarized it uh succinctly in in plain English. But i- as I indicated last week, I believe it was, in the absence of a disparity study, which is a time-consuming uh effort, you need to retain a consultant and and conduct the study. So in the absence of the study, they would identify specific data that would support a finding that the minority women-owned businesses were disadvantaged in the contracting process in the areas that you are seeking to contract with them, which further narrows the scope of how you may be able to support them. But in the absence of that study, you would not be able to do this that or go too far in the direction of uh giving preferences to M W B Es because that would be viewed as potentially violating the equal protection clause. And the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals uh has specifically struck down programs in other jurisdictions with that, in the absence of that study. And I think it was last week that I referenced uh the study that Baltimore City did. Uh, and I I think very timely, we saw today that Montgomery County is in the process of conducting just such a study, county law, um and and they've not completed it. So there are very real constitutional concerns that arise without that study and the data that supports it. And even if the study does show a disparity, then you would have to, what lawyers call narrowly tailor, the preference that would be created to address that specific disparity. So i- i- it has to be done very systematically and very carefully. Did I miss anything, Mayor? I think in.
No, I think that's, I just wanted to make sure folks had that background cuz I spent a lot of time looking into this. It was very helpful uh this weekend to have that. Um, see, I can, Councilmember Kovar and then Smith have their hands up.
Yeah, tha- thank you, and I appreciate the research, uh Mayor, that you did and and Mr. Cornbrooks's information also. So I I just had a follow-up question or two. So is there a way to weave into what we would have in the purchasing code and not run afoul of the uh legal and constitutional strictures that have been discussed there, language that would, for example, enable us to focus on the extent to which, for example, firms are diverse in their staffing or the extent to which firms have experience in engagement in for lack of another term, underserved communities or or black and brown communities. So so those are aspects of the work of the firm that we, I think most of us would say it would make sense to have, depending on what the precise job is. But are those the kinds of things also that a study and these other actions would need to uh have happened first?
Right, so um and Mayor, Mayor, I can't see you, but I'm I'm gonna assume that that question's directed to me. I I'm going to, part of what the study does is potentially allow requirements to be put in to place with respect to prime contractors that the city would enter into a contract with, and then potentially their subcontractors. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, uh there is a pass-through component of it that may allow what you're asking about, Councilmember Kovar, to be addressed. No guarantees. We wouldn't know without, until we saw the study.
But we still need the study.
But in R F P, for example, though, you can say, or can you say, a firm must have experience doing outreach to areas that uh don't speak English as well or or something of that nature.
Well, so we we may be talking about different issues at the moment, but with respect to W or contracting with um minority women-owned businesses, e- e- enterprises, you are allowed to do the indirect type of of action that we have in the code now, which relates to uh or which the mayor's proposal would be suggesting uh to put in, which relates to um allowing things like soliciting applications for minority women, women-owned businesses. But in terms of getting into specifics about specific composition of who may be employed, I I'm I'm not prepared to answer that question. In terms of asking, do you have experience in dealing with certain areas? That would seem to me to be relevant to who you're looking to hire and not related to um the question of the disparity study. It may be, depending on how you set it up, but.
And I I think one of the other things that I talked to the Acting City Manager, Ms. Clark, about is, you know, there are definitions and certifications for being a um minority women-owned business enterprise that we would rely on. So we are not, our, the city would not be doing any certification and things like that. And I think we, that would be too much for us. You'd actually do, some cities do. Boston actually has a very interesting um program that they're, their certification program that they're doing that. I looked at, but um so I think that's also one of the other distinctions, um Councilmember Kovar, in terms of like looking at these things. Councilmember Smith.
Ms. Clark, can you tell us what is the amount of money that the council spends on uh vendor contracts annually? Do you know offhand what what that number is?
I do not know offhand. Yeah, I mean, I I think we'd have to separate that out in our um data, but yeah, I I do not know offhand.
Okay, uh we- we- I would like to, well, I guess my first question is, can we make this where as clause contingent on uh the completion of the study?
Well, so um the way the mayor drafted it, and I believe she successfully did so, designed to allow this, allow a step before you cross the line getting into the area where you would need to have the study. And so that this were, this whereas clause and then subsequent language that would be placed that that is being suggested, it would be placed in the code, would stop just short of where you start to get into the areas where you need the study. But i- if you want to make it contingent upon the study being completed, I I suppose you could do that, but it's not designed to to be that way at the mall.
Yeah, we we might want to look at the second part of the language proposed before we um finish this part of the discussion. So if I can just scroll down quickly. So um Councilmember Smith, we are, as the, as Madam Mayor has proposed, we are adding in, outlining very specific steps. And in terms of um reporting to the council annually on the city's efforts to advance equity and purchasing, which is the last provision there, you know, I I think part of that can be exploring, you know, implementing the kind of program that would be based on a disparity study or looking into what it would take to do a disparity disparity study. So I think that's included here, but this is a good kind of interim language.
Okay, uh and just, I I mean, that's fine. And then finally, I'll just say that I would support the uh study, the uh city investing in a study. I think it is critical that we figure out a way to uh try to invest in uh N W B E firms.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Cersei.
Hey, thank you. Um, this this conversation has been really helpful. You know, my point of reference is always the federal government. That's a good thing or a bad thing. But um for uh M W B Es, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around how this works logistically. Typically, they're certified through some other entity. And ideally, someone like the county would also have programs and funding mechanisms. Where, for example, um part of some of the challenges with small minority women-owned businesses or enterprises is that they may not be aware or have the ability to respond to a contract announcement within the timeframe in which, you know, most go out, right? So goes out, you have two weeks to get your package together. You don't have the staff to do that. And so at least what happens on in in the Fed world is you have specific contracting mechanisms that you could decide as a city, you know what, instead of doing a full and open, we can pick someone from this particular that's already been vetted, that we already know that they have the expertise. They have a standard template that outlines what they do, and we could just choose to pick them. Um, and that kind of eliminates that barrier. But it sounds like what we're talking about right now to start is just making sure that we can tap into perhaps that certification process that this um county may already have in place. So that when we have things that we're putting out to bid, we're communicating through the county's mechanisms to make sure that that is getting out to folks. Um, and then from there, we would do some sort of disparity study for the purpose of knowing, for example, when we're rating our contractors, do we need to add five extra points in the scoring mechanism for um a firm that is a M W B E, right? How we we can say that for sure, that's, you know, that, yes, we're gonna give whoever meets that certification extra ten points in our scoring mechanism for our contract or grant because we haven't done the diversity study enough to know how the imbalance is and how much of an additional weight they may need. So I I think that this is a really good start. I I will say, I kind of echo Councilmember Smith. It will require more work um in order to make sure that we're actually able to award contracts. You know, because you can only award to folks who apply. And even if we are just marketing um our contracts And even if we are just marketing our contracts or our procurements to minority women-owned businesses, if we can't figure out how to close that gap in order to make them competitive, then, and that's not wanted, you know, we're not going to see them in the flow, because they're never going to enter, because they don't have enough time to apply, or they don't have the needs assessments done and all of that stuff. So I support this language, but I also, you know, think that it's going to be important for us to make sure that we have resources, or we're working with the county, because ideally, the county would come up with some kind of mechanism that we could tap into. But if there's, you know, some way that we can, you know, continue to move down this path, either with the diversity study or continuing conversations with the county, so that they can come up with some alternative funding mechanisms, I think that would be really great. And so I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about this right, though.
I think so. Well, I don't know, the attorney, but I think, you know, I tried to push the envelope as far as we could without the disparity study. And I think in addition to, there are other resources in one of the documents I linked to. So I think we don't have to just rely on the county's networks. There are a number of other networks and places that we can go to, to make sure that we're doing the outreach to these groups. So I think also, like, helping us create that network. And I know that, you know, under Samira Cogaine, for the last couple of years since she's been with the city, she has been expanding that. I, you know, I'll let the deputy, the acting city manager address that. But this is a way of us just putting it in the code.
Right.
Some of the things that our staff have already started doing.
And Skip, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't, without that, we need that disparity study in order, like, we couldn't just decide on our own that we, for our grants, for example, and we have our scoring mechanism for grants that we typically have to include as part of those grant packages. We can't just arbitrarily decide we're going to give these firms that meet this certification an extra 10 points without the disparity study, right?
So I would, I would put grants in a different category and make that a whole different discussion. Like, we're talking about contracting for the purposes, yeah. So, right, you cannot give any preference without the disparity study and data resulting from the disparity study that allows you to narrowly address the disparity that the study reveals. And until that happens, you can take steps in the direction that are being suggested here. And, you know, we don't know what the disparity study is going to show. We have no idea what it's going to show. But until you get that, you can't do anything.
Okay, okay. All right. No, that's helpful. So, yeah, I stand by my initial, initial thoughts that we need that disparity study. And the only thing we could do would be outreach technical assistance.
Correct.
To know who we are. And then once we have that disparity study done, then we could actually start doing things like working in, to try to close the gap in the actual contracting mechanisms and the scoring and things that we do. Okay. No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, I had some similar questions. I support the idea of having this kind of step in now so that we can start doing something now. I was wondering, maybe the answer is, so there's outreach, getting people to apply, and then, and then there's selection, and for selection to have any kind of preference, if I understand this right, you need a disparity study, and the study needs to show that there's a disparity. Okay. In the green purchasing code, there's a percentage difference so that someone who is proposing something that meets a social goal, we, we allow ourselves to pay a little more. So can, can we do that here? And we have to do that, that's not a way around the disparity study, right? Yeah, okay.
You can't, you can't get around the disparity study.
All right. And then, do we have an idea of ballpark price on a, and length of time, and how much staff it takes to do a disparity study?
I think that I would suggest we, we have that conversation at another time, because.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds right.
I think it would not be beneficial to us to not have an informed conversation on that. My understanding from, again, and did not get into this in my research this weekend, looking at this, is that it can be quite expensive and labor-intensive, and I think we have to spend the time to really think about what we need in the city. And I think Councilmember Smith raised a really good question before, is, which is, how much money do we even spend on vendors in a given year? You know, would actually help us. And I think we should also look at some of the things that the county is doing. I will also say that Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments that we are part of is always, has also taken, undertaken equity in a number of respects. And this might be an area where we push COG to look at possibly some disparity studies regionally that might also be beneficial to us. There are a lot of avenues of thinking about how to do these disparity studies. And I think tonight, maybe, that might be a bit.
Not the time. Yeah, that's, that's fine. And then when we get into the code in general, I have a question, because I'm not sure. I've seen the last, the latest version, a question about what should be in code and what should be in regulation. And some of this gets very specific, might fall into that latter category, but I can't say that without seeing how the rest of it's turned out. But I think, I think that the idea is great, and thank you for doing it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. Yeah, I just agree that I support this. And, you know, it's frustrating that we do have the barriers to what we can do, but I think this, this is a good step in the right direction. I had to step away briefly, so I hope I didn't, I'm not repeating a question. But one thing that came to my mind as we were talking with regard to decisions that are made when they, when things come back to the council. And maybe that's not appropriate for this section, since this is talking about the staff kind of review of things. But is, without, having done the disparity study, could the materials that come to the council always have the information on whether or not this is an M W B E firm or not? And could the council then make a decision based on that to award a contract in a certain, a certain way?
Well, I, I mean, that would seem to me as if the, you would be giving a preference without the disparity study having been conducted. So if, if my understanding of the question is correct, my answer would be no.
Okay. Could, my, I guess, maybe that would be irrelevant then, but I was just thinking it might be useful for us to have that information as we get a cover sheet from staff, if any of the firms that has applied is. But if we can't make a decision based on that, then I suppose that maybe would not be.
I would say that would be unwise, because it could potentially taint the process. The better method would be through the reporting that you would receive. And that way, those two things would be separate, until the disparity study is complete and we have the information from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. All right. Ms. Clark, I think we can go start at the top. I think that was the only change that has been recommended for the resolutions. I think we're into the code language now.
Correct. All right. So in the very first section, this was an edit proposed by Councilwoman Dibala, energy and water consumption. And I think that makes sense, so we've added that in. Councilwoman Dibala had a question here.
Can I just ask a quick question? So this is, this is the, a revised, I want to make a point. This is a revised list from what was in the green purchasing code originally. I have looked at it very closely. It is fine with me, but I did just want to point that out for those of you who were around when the first list was made. So, for example, the first list didn't have biodiversity on it, and I think it's good that we have it. Just highlighting. That's all. Sorry to interrupt. Go on.
Okay. And then you had a question that locally supplied means products and goods made or supplied or services provided. So I think you're referring to a definition that we have further down here, that we have this definition locally supplied. And it refers to businesses that are within 150 miles of the city. So I think you're pointing out that, do we want to use that, does this, does that definition apply here?
Right. So if we already, and there's a couple of others like this. If we already refer to it one way in the current green purchasing code, should we mirror that language in the new code rather than create another, a whole other new, a new phrase? And that's just a technical edit that I will let the attorney settle.
Skip, do you have a thought there?
Well, my thought is, is that the word local as used here would be, we would apply the definition that's in the purchasing code. So I would need clarity if it needs to be something different.
Meaning you would change it to locally supplied businesses or whatever the phrase was?
I think locally supplied means, you know, supplied by a local business. I don't know that we have a definition of local business in.
No, you don't, which is why I brought it up. And that's fine with me. Again, I don't think we could, to have every, everybody. Yeah, it's, again, a technical point. And however it works out is fine with me.
We could say, define local business as within city limits, I guess, is one option.
For whatever it's worth, that really limits you.
Yeah. So maybe it's better to leave it as is. It sounds like, Skip, you're fine with leaving it as is.
I would interpret it as using the same definition as locally supplied. And if there needs some other definition, I need to be told what the preference is.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right. We have a comment from Skip here. Skip, did you want to raise this comment?
Right. So, so we, this section, it kind of works a little bit backwards here, but 7.08.145 is, this, this is language that is in the current code that we moved up here to this spot when we were contemplating taking out 7.0145 and putting that in regulations. I think at present, given what we heard last week and concerns about the regulation process and, and how involved that might be, it seems like the better course of action, or it seems like the desired course of action, would be to leave what is existing 7.08.145 in the code, in which case that would negate the need for this, as it would be duplicative. So if we're not going to do the regulations related to environmentally preferred purchasing, we would leave that section of the code intact and remove this reference, because it's already in the, the current version of the code, which we would not be altering that portion. I hope that's a clear explanation. It's more clear later on when we get to 7.08.145.
Great, thank you, Skip. So, yeah, we'll, we'll bracket that until we get to that section in the code. All right. And we just went over the mayor's equity goals. And then these additions, I made a note here that, is everyone hearing an echo? I'm hearing an echo. I apologize if I'm, if I'm having feedback. But we add before.
I think it's our city attorney.
I apologize.
That the current code, since it's been so long since it's been updated, has only federal. So we, obviously makes sense to add in state or county assistance or contract funds and state or county laws or regulations, those will also apply. So this is a simple change that has been added, and this is a simple edit. So I assume there's no objection to that, and I'll keep moving. Same with this change. This is simply changing city administrator to city manager, which is the more accurate term. All right. And this was a new addition. And this is just clarifying that you must have a formal contract for purchases that are above $30,000. If it's below, you can have a purchase order rather than a formal contract. Was there anything else we needed to clarify there, Skip?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. And here we're adding, so the current code doesn't have anything explicitly providing, allowing staff to take advantage of rider or piggyback contracts. This is a typical type of contract that we'd like to add into our purchasing code. So we've now added a definition for that, and it's referenced later in the code as well. And this was a comment from Councilwoman Dibala. Yeah, so Councilwoman Dibala, I did run these by our sustainability manager. Her only comment was.
Great, I didn't know that.
Yeah. She got back to me about an hour ago, but she said she would prefer it to be 100% for this percentage, but that otherwise, she thought that these were, were fine as, as configured. All right, so. Okay, and here's the first threshold change. So again, previously, we were required to get council approval for anything over $5,000 for professional and $10,000 for goods and services. And we'd like to change that to just all purchases over $50,000. So any comments or questions on that before we move on? All right. And here, again, this is just a simple change. This was just to clarify the type of determination that that should be, a determination made in writing.
Jessica, I just want to mention that I did raise my hand. I'm not sure if it's showing up, so I apologize.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Interrupting. So I think there's this overall question of what the different thresholds should be. And I know that that appears in multiple points throughout here. And so that was the first point at which it appears. And so I feel like there should probably be a discussion at some point about all aspects of the thresholds. And it can be now or later, but I do want to make sure that we discuss the, whether the 50,000 is the appropriate number. And if there's a better spot in the flow of the purchasing code, we can wait till then. But since that was the first point that that appeared, I just wanted to flag that. So, so, and just to, just to summarize, I mean, I, I have some misgivings about going as high as 50. And just to, just to kick it off, I think the vote we took earlier this evening, which I think was around $46,000 on the contract for the redistricting, is an illustration. And, you know, I guess it's kind of like, you know, when you see it, what seems too high and what doesn't seem too high. But I, I would be more inclined to, I think the number should definitely go up. I'd be more inclined to have it around 30,000, which seems to be what a number of other communities in the region that are more our size are doing as opposed to 50. So.
Okay.
I have no idea what my colleagues think, but I just want to register that, that point.
Okay, so I think we can keep going and come back to that then. All right. So again, city manager change of terminology, again, clarifying that this should be in writing. And then this is adding in that, so before, it wasn't explicitly allowed in the code that the city manager designated could approve. it wasn't explicitly allowed in the code that the city manager's designee could approve purchases. And so we're adding that in that either myself or maybe a procurement officer in the future could approve purchases less than $30,000. Any questions or comments on that?
Councilmember Kovar, is that an old hand or?
An old hand from an old hand. Sorry.
Well, I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
And then Skip, did you want to talk about why this provision was removed? My understanding is that it conflicts with the charter.
I'm happy to have the discussion if there's a question about it. But yes, that is the answer. It conflicts with the charter.
Okay. So previously we had language saying that the mayor shall have the authority to enter into all other contracts and agreements on behalf of the city, including agreements with other governmental entities. And this is being removed because it's in conflict with the charter.
So essentially what would happen if there was something that the city manager couldn't sign is that we would have a situation in which for example, well, we would simply bring something before the council that would have the council authorize whatever the contract is, and then authorize the mayor to sign, which would eliminate the issue. So.
Okay. All right. So now we're entering section on source selection and contract formation. And here again, we come to the new threshold amount, which is proposed at $50,000 for contracts awarded by council and less than $50,000 for contracts awarded by the city manager or designee. And then this is similar to above that, again, currently as written in the code, it's like the city manager has to personally approve purchases below 30,000. And we're allowing delegation authority here under 30,000. And then this ties into the definition of a formal contract that we saw above, that all procurements exceeding $30,000 in value require a formal contract. And it also must be competitively bid, which we'll see later. And then all procurements not exceeding $30,000 must be supported by written documentation. So that would be a purchase order, but not a formal contract. Any questions on this section? And we'll come back to the 50,000 amount. All right. Okay. And then this is a new section. Skip, could you talk a little bit about how this was developed? This is a section that we didn't have previously.
So. So the purpose of this is, is designed to work in conjunction with raising the approval amount for the city manager, but also allowing for the idea that you could have a contract that starts out as less than the $50,000 amount. And there are changes that will then potentially bump it over the $50,000 amount. This is designed to act as a in concert with the $50,000 cap to require to come back to the council if and when it reaches a point which is over the amount that's allowed for under this provision.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? I think Councilman Kovar, one of your questions, yeah, had been relevant to that, and Skip answered that shortly before the meeting.
Right. So I just want to make sure I understood that. So if in a situation where it wasn't a change that led to it going over 50, but just a contract that would have been worth 50 or whatever the threshold ends up being, but instead was broken up into several smaller components, which were below that, but was taken together, exceeded that. I think your response to me was that that would be inappropriate and not allowed. Is that right?
Well, right. So in other words, if, if the goal of, of, of the breaking the contracts down into lesser dollar amounts to keep it under 50,000, that, that would be clearly in, in, in and run around what the cap is. Now, I mean, if you have three separate independent contracts over a period of time, I mean, you know, a lot of it depends on the facts and circumstances, but there's, there's no way that, well, there's no interpretation of this that would allow for someone to deliberately break contracts into a lesser dollar amount in order to avoid the caps. That would be improper. And thank you for that clarification, because I think it's an important one.
Okay. All right. Moving on. We now have a provision for multi-term contracts. So these are not to exceed three years. We, at the time that the contract is awarded, there can be conditions of renewal or extension. And I think we'll see later in the code that the city manager can extend by one year. But anything after, any extension for longer than one year has to have council approval. But, you know, other term contracts are commonly used and we've, you know, without this, you know, it allows for discounts over time. And so it's something that we're very useful to staff. Are there any questions on the addition of multi-term contracts?
Does that apply regardless of the amount for it? Or is that only above a certain level?
So there is, well, it would typically, I mean practically speaking, you're, you're not going to have a multi-term contract of an insignificant dollar amount. But it is written so as that it would apply to any multi-term contract.
So if it was a really large amount, that could still be done, but that would have been written into, the, the ability to do that would have been written into the original contract. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's, that, yes. So a multi-term contract is contemplated at the beginning of contracting. And, and it is, now again, we have language in here that relates to appropriation. But, you know, that would all have to be, you can only appropriate per budget year. So the code and the contract, well, the code has a language, the contract typically has language and it's subject to appropriation. So even though it's a multi-use term contract, it really is only an annual contract because you could always, through the appropriation process, end the contract by not funding it.
But in other words, it, it also wouldn't be an effective prize if there was a, an effort to extend it because that would have been in the initial solicitation as well, right?
That, that is, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then the next news-
Sorry. I, I, I have a question. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what we mean by term versus year, because a, a contract term can be for multiple years. And we're talking about extensions. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about that a term can, can be for however long it needs to be, but if you want to extend, so let's say, for example, we have a contractor is repaving, making this up, Wildwood Drive, and that contract is for a two-year term. Maybe they're doing some sidewalk work. They're doing a lot of stuff. And it's a two-year term contract. And maybe, for example, they add a task. So we would extend that, extend it for a year, or maybe want to extend it for another year. Is, is that what you're referring to? Are you actually talking about contracts where maybe we're purchasing toner? There's a lot of toner for $30,000, but I'm making this up. You're purchasing toner and it's a one-year kind of goods kind of contract. And then the next year, you're like three years, and then you want to renew, maybe you only renew for one year, but you don't, you would then have to come back to council. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what we mean by, are we talking about the, the multiple contract terms or contracts with multiple, like one-year contracts that we're talking about extending? Does that question make sense at all?
Right. It's, it, it's, it's for the period of time.
For the performance, right?
Well, right. But we're going to put it, it's, it's written as in the context of the period of time, because you could have, you could have a six-month contract, right?
Right.
And you could extend. You could have a year contract that you could extend. But the, so that's what we're talking about. You would not, one of the, one of the fundamental difficulties when you're dealing with municipal contracting is that the reality is, is everything is a one-year contract and that you're dealing with renewals after that because of the appropriation issue that we just discussed. I prefer to think of it as it's a one-year contract with multiple options for renewal. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense. That makes perfect sense. So it's basically, it's a one-year with option years tied to it. And you can execute the options. But what we're saying is, we can't go over three years of options. You could only extend it three, like three years.
But, but we, we draft it as it's a three-year contract because the vendors tend to get very nervous. If, they have a hard time understanding that concept that we just discussed. And for the reasons that Jessica just said, they can get discounts and everything because they have the three years. But we build into the contract language, you know, that the, both the appropriation piece and that the city code is controlling so that we have that protection built into it.
Yeah. No, that makes sense.
Right. And I think if I'm not mistaken, that this was driven mostly by the IT department because of like software package, other things that, as, as the, like renewal of, of items and things. I think that's where I remember this first coming from. Yeah.
All right. And then another type of contract that we'd like to add to the code are indefinite quantities contracts. This is where the city may procure goods or services at fixed unit prices. And where practical, I guess the limit here is that the contract should include a maximum amount of funds that may be expended within a one-year period. And I know Councilman Kovar had a question about that, that sentence, which we can get to in a moment. I just wanted to note that this is primarily used by our public works department for indefinite quantities of things like asphalt, concrete, and stormwater improvement materials. So Councilman Kovar, you have your hand raised?
Yeah. So, and thank you for the explanation and the exchange of emails earlier, which was very helpful. So my question is on the last sentence where it says, we're practical, excuse me, and indefinite quantities contracts should include a maximum amount of funds, which you just said, to be spent within one year. And so that's a great clause to have, or a great sentence to have. The question is, what happens if it's not practical? And, and how would that be explained? Then, you know, some of these construction contracts can be fairly large, right? When you're talking about paving and sidewalks and things of that nature. So what my suggestion or question was, or is, is whether we could add an additional requirement there that if it isn't practical, whatever the explanation for that would be, that there ought to be some sort of written explanation from the city manager or relevant staff or whatever, explaining why it isn't practical. So that, to the extent that there could be some contract that seemed rather more open-ended in terms of the amount, we would at least understand why it wasn't practical to fix it at a certain level. I hope that makes sense.
That does make sense. And Skip and I discussed that beforehand, and I think that, that makes sense, and that would be a good add here. So we didn't have a chance to draft-
And we don't have to add it now.
Yeah.
If that makes sense and could be done before it comes back to us, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. So yeah, I'll make a note of that here. So one second.
Jessica, I have it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. And so now we're getting to the question of administrative regulations versus code. So this entire section, the Nuclear Free Zone Act has been moved from the code chapter relevant to the Nuclear Free Committee. And so I think for time's sake, Skip had recommended that we leave this section as is, right, rather than trying to, so it's, it's good that it's in the purchasing chapter. So it makes sense that it's here, but in terms of making changes to the content, we're going to leave it primarily as is and not move any portion to administrative regulations for now. And let the BCC update process play out before we make more, more extensive modifications. Is that?
Yeah, yes. Ms. Clark, that's, that's accurate. I think that if we were to, we would be making more work for ourselves at this point. And, and we can, once we go through the BCC process, we can either reinsert this provision as modified, if need be, or we can leave it as is. But to put it in and then to change it now without knowing what the committee's going to look like, would, would seem to overly complicate the process at this point. So my suggestion would be, we just leave what is now some in front of you in chapter 14.04 and reinstate the existing reference to that as a placeholder until we go through the BCC process.
I have, and sorry, yeah, Kostick and Dibala with their hands up.
Yeah. Um, thank you. And this makes, that makes sense to me. I, I definitely understand doing that. And the part that I actually wanted to comment on, I think is, it's related to this, but I think I actually ended up later in the document. So if it's better to discuss it, then that's fine. But there was a section that talks about sending copies of the chapter to the governor and senators, identifying a, a town in Russia of a similar size and sending it to them. I wasn't sure that those were still totally relevant to what this was now versus what it was when it was the Nuclear Free commitment started, you know, years ago. And I, I think, Jessica, I think it is actually at the end in section 14. At, at least that was where it was in, in my version. So I just wanted to address that and, and propose that maybe we remove, do a simple removing of those while maintaining the, the rest of the content.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's B. Well, yours is a little different than mine, but, um.
So that, yeah, I mean, oh, it is updated here. Okay. A little bit, just the basic terminology. Okay.
And I can send, if no one has a, a significant concern with that, I can send that edit around and take a look at it.
It's a good idea.
And I apologize for interrupting. We, we included that portion for the sake of completeness. So you could see how we were changing the chapter 14.04 for your reference. But- But that that would be, in my view, an entirely different process from procurement piece. Um, and 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 maybe could be part of of the B C C undertaking or not, I don't know. But um, w- we can certainly change any and all of that whenever we want.
So, sorry, am I, am I misunderstanding? Is that actually not part of what we're adopting and that would just remain in the chapter fourteen?
That, that's correct, it's not.
Ah, okay.
I- i- it's already there.
Okay, great, that makes sense. I just didn't want us to adopt something that newly said that and then not do it, so that's fine.
I apologize for the confusion, we were trying to to provide all the information so you would have it in front of you and and and, I guess it, we caused confusion where we're trying to avoid it, so I apologize for that.
No, thank you.
So wait, no, I got, I just got confused, I'm sorry. I thought I had it announced, that whole notification about the president of, like, is, is that staying in or getting taken out?
If I'm understanding correctly, that's staying in, but it's not something that we're newly adopting. It's just the way things are currently and we're not changing that part, is that correct?
Right, so because we took such a large section out of chapter fourteen point oh four and inserted it in procurement, because it, we believe that it made it more clear it was fair to have it there for anybody that's reviewing the procurement section. We included as part of your materials, the subsequent amendments, which are non-substantive to chapter fourteen point oh four, other than the fact that we were originally attempting to move the provision that was in, that is currently in front of you. So all the language that we just discussed, that's already in the code. You would not be changing chapter fourteen point oh four substantively, other than the movement of the provision, which I'm now recommending against, because we're running up against the B C C issue. Does that, I hope that.
So we go, we revert back to what we had before, except we're making slight changes. So we're not talking about the Soviet Union anymore, we're talking about the President of Russia or whatever, right?
Yeah, that, that was part of what I didn't fully understand, was whether we were making those edits now or not. Because if we are, then I think we should just delete those sections.
I, 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 we were just, we will just leave it alone, we will pull it out of there because it, i- i- it needs to be part of a comprehensive review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this whole section is staying in the purchasing chapter and it's pulled from chapter fourteen. But uh, the rest of chapter fourteen is staying as is.
I have my hand up?
Oh, yes.
Cindy, sorry, that's okay.
Um, I had gone through this and I had picked out, um, besides the thing that Casey mentioned, I had picked out two places where the committee is um, mentioned. And in an effort to make it, so there are only two, and in an effort to make it committee neutral, not to take a stand on a committee one way or the other, I suggested some words. Um, and I would like to, I did send them around, um, I can send them around again, uh, for people to take a look at. And so I don't think that it does make a policy decision about the committee. I think it just cleans up the language. Um, and uh, unless the, unless somebody says, says that they think it's a substantive thing, I'll just send it around and everybody can look at it again, rather than do it right now. They were in, get it up, they were in E and F of the new fourteen oh four.
Yeah, Councilwoman Abala, it may have been to, I think you wanted to make the city the actor rather than the committee, was that the?
Well, E, I, okay, so I was, I was gonna, I don't want to distract from the main conversation, which is the threshold. Um, but in E, I was proposing to just take out upon advice of the committee. And then in F, I was proposing, um, that the city manager or their designee, which could be a committee, shall provide the public notice, et cetera, et cetera, wherever that is in F. I don't seem to have.
Yes, so I guess my con, my concern with that, um, Councilwoman Abala, okay, would be that then you're making the city council responsible without a body to assist them with uh, creating the list of nuclear weapons producers. Um, I I don't know if we want to make the city council the actor in that sentence.
Um, okay, um, I guess that was my understanding of what we were in practice doing now, but maybe I got it wrong.
Not while the Nuclear Free Committee still exists.
If I can jump in, I, I thought that part of the issue was that there was basically not a list being created so much as adopted. Um, if I'm understanding correctly, that we're, we're getting a list, an external list and I proposing to go with that list or not.
And the language that that made that suggested change too. But again, I, we don't need to talk about this right now if the mayor wants to continue. Since.
Yes, I mean, I, I think.
So it's me, Jessica and Skip has read this.
No, I, I think we've all read it, I, I, I'm, we can, sorry, I'm not, we're going through this, this way because we're voting on this next week, this is exactly what we should be doing. So I, I think we're all, and I apologize if I missed an email today, there are a lot of emails. Um, so I'm just trying to catch up on the language and was trying to look for the email you sent um, on this.
Okay. I can resend it after.
So basically, what we're saying here is we're just taking out the Nuclear Free.
Committee.
Committee in terms of having the list.
Yeah, just making it neutral.
And I, I think you had some language there though, that was also about, like, adopting a list or something like that, didn't you, Councilmember Dabala?
Uh, I thought it was identify a source as opposed to establish and publish.
Oh, okay.
Because as Councilwoman Kostick explained, in practice, the city, no matter who it is, isn't ident, isn't pu, isn't establishing, that we're not making our own list. That's not.
Right, right.
Realistic, no matter who you talk to. Instead, we are identifying a source for a list, if I understood it correctly. So I was trying to clean up something that was independent of the committee was a problem also.
I, I, I'm sorry, I was, I like the direction of this, I am searching my email, I cannot find that email for you.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can.
But I do like the direction this is going in because they don't create a list now and it's, they just do the, um, what's the name of the list, the, yeah, so I think it makes sense to go in this direction.
Right, and on F one B, um, the suggestion was not to eliminate the concept of notification uh, to the public. The, the intent was to, again, um, have the city manager or their designee noti, notify, what did I say? Provide public notice fourteen days in advance, rather than the, the intents and the committees and the so forth in F one B. What you, what you have here is not actually what I suggested. Shall I read it?
Sure, yeah, that would be helpful.
So the city, city manager or their designee, now I've lost it, hang on. Shall provide public notice fourteen days in advance. So yes, that changes the actor, um, but it also makes it way simpler.
Okay, I'm not, so is it here, I'm not seeing this section.
The ci, so I don't, there's a headline, I don't know, that's.
Right, so I, I'm not sure, Councilwoman Abala, I apologize for interrupting. You, you definitely circulated changes. I did not think that they, they were going to be part of the discussion based on uh, some of the guidance that I gave regarding taking this out and moving it at, at this time. But uh, I have your changes and if that is the consensus of the group, we can go ahead and put them in. Uh, and then I would need input from the council as to whether you you want to leave this provision in or we want to get bogged down in this discussion about the Nuclear Free portions uh, of the code as opposed to the procurement portions of the code.
Right.
So.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I, I think the, the waiver process is, you know, part of kind of the Nuclear Free Committee's job description. So if we get into this, we're changing the functions of the committee that's still existing. That's, I guess that's my concern.
Am I, am I misunderstanding that? Sorry, Skip, you're recommending that we do move this section, but we don't touch it? Or you're recommending that we actually just leave this part out?
So, so, so the underlying language is all, none of it is in the procurement ordinance as it exists. It's all in chapter fourteen, we moved it from chapter fourteen to here, it's underlined because it's been moved. So that's, that's the, the change. So now we're getting into committee issues and how the committee and the council are functioning together as part of the procurement discussion. It'd be far easier to, for the, in my view, of course, it's up to the council, but it's be far easier, in my view, to have the committee-council interaction as part of the B C C discussion and then make any subsequent changes to the procurement ordinance, once we know how those roles are defined. So rather than, so my thought was, let's bifurcate the discussion by just leaving this in chapter fourteen and getting to it when we address the B C C issue. Um, and and then making the appropriate changes from there. But if you want to have a discussion now, we certainly can have the discussion now and flesh that out.
So the, so the first, there were two places, the first one, it, we already talked about it, this is the second one, which I see uh, the deputies, the acting city manager's point unintentionally. I mean, I, I thought if the point was that the city manager or their designee shall make sure there's public notice by letting the committee know, that we could just say, make sure there's public notice. But if you feel that it substantively changes the committee, then I'm going to just pass on this one for now.
So I'm sorry, I got, I really got, I got confused with section we were in. And I, I agree that we should not touch the, I guess, I, yeah, I, I thought we had moved on, sorry. I, I got confused of where we were in the document, um, and I thought we had decided that we weren't making changes, but.
Yeah, Skip, that might have been me, I, I thought we were moving the section from chapter fourteen, but, and adding it to this chapter, but then not making changes. But now I understand that we're leaving it in chapter fourteen and not making any changes to chapter fourteen.
Right, because if we move it, it's generated this discussion, which is what we're trying to avoid so that we could get through the, the procurement aspects of, of, of the procurement ordinance.
So, so Councilwoman Dabala, are you?
I'm not confused, and now I'm, I'm sorry, now I don't follow, so.
Councilmember Kovar.
Into the purchasing at all.
Solve it all for us.
Yeah, I, I, um, if we're not moving it into the purchasing section at all, or just not touching it, that's different. I understood that we were moving it into the purchasing section and and I noticed there were two places where the committee was mentioned and my intent was to make it committee neutral and and to fix that other issue in E that we just talked about. So if we're not moving this into purchasing, then let's leave it alone. If we are moving it into purchasing, since we have just talked about E and the fix there and why it's useful, I'd like to continue to propose that and I'm prepared to just not talk about F at this point, if people feel that's too much. Because I understand the focus of this.
My recommendation is not, is not to move it into purchasing at this time. So we would, it won't be in the next, if, if council agrees with my recommendation, it won't be in the version C next week.
Um, just to be clear, I've been operating under the assumption, since before we started tonight, that we're just leaving this in fourteen and not doing any of it. And so I, I did, I guess I did receive the email, but I assumed that that was for sometime in the fall. So I don't think, to me, either of these changes should be made out. I haven't had a chance to look at any of this because I understood we just weren't doing it and it's not even going to end up in this for now. So to me, and this, that seems to be what Skip is saying, we're just not talking about this whole area tonight.
Right. Yeah, so again, I, I must have misunderstood at the, at the discussion tonight, but I was under the impression we were moving the nuclear purchasing piece to purchasing and therefore I was suggesting change. We're not moving it, we're not moving it.
Councilwoman Circe.
I was muted, um, so I, I, you know, this is, this has been a whirlwind of chat. Um, I think I'm, I'm okay with us for the current discussion, um, taking this uh, language out of the procurement section for now. Um, I will say for the city attorney and um, acting city manager and perhaps our new city manager, that when we have, when we start having conversations about the roles and responsibilities of the Nuclear Free Committee, that if we deem it necessary, based on the decisions that are made at that point, we could potentially remove or move that language um, into the procurement section, if it is appropriate. I think where we're running into a little challenge right now is that it's being moved. It, there are aspects of this that relate strictly to, particularly to our procurement procedures. Um, but if we're not in a place just yet to make firm decisions around um, what the Nuclear Free Committee's role is and the council needs to vote on that to just make our lives a little easier, I'm fine with us taking this language out now, but we just need to make sure we put a pin and the possibility of moving it back to this section of the code later.
Yes, I think that's what we're doing, so don't make these changes and let's continue.
All right.
And I think we can, I, yeah, I think we can touch upon some of the, the highlights because then we, what we need to make sure we get to today is the um, the thresholds because we haven't had any substantive conversation on that.
Okay, so this section relates to um, reporting requirements and keeping records of procurement actions. And um, the key change here is that, that we're requiring the city manager to immediately report any emergency purchases over thirty thousand, um, I'm sorry, over over ten thousand, um, and to also report on procurements between thirty thousand and fifty thousand because with the new council approval threshold being moved to fifty thousand, um, council will not have seen the purchases between thirty thousand and fifty thousand. And I know that there were some questions in terms of the frequency of reporting. We do have language here that says once every fiscal year. Um, I know that Councilwoman Dabala and Councilman Kovar felt that they would want more frequent reporting. Um, and, you know, I think maybe twice a year might be a good uh, frequency for, for staff. I think quarterly might be a little, a little too frequent, um, although we're trying to move towards full transparency. Um, so, you know, open to this, to uh, discussion on that.
Councilwoman Dabala, did you have, yeah, I don't know, that's an old or a new hand.
It was an old hand, but I was going for a new hand. Um, and I think that doing it, um, changing it to twice a year is, is fine, I'm fine with that.
Great, um, Councilmember Smith and then Kovar.
Okay, so my question about the reporting, why is it so difficult to report quarterly? I mean, isn't it just like a computer generated report and just put in the parameters and hit return?
Not yet. We're not currently using, so our data is currently structured to individual checks, individual payments, and it doesn't separate out contract amounts from individual payments. So we still do have to do some manual restructuring of the data. But we want to build out the Tyler Technologies contract modules so that we are able to very easily generate that report. And that's what other cities are doing in terms of they're just publishing that report. I don't know, almost in real time. They're pushing it from their financial system to their public website, and that's what we want to move towards, but we're not capable of it yet.
Okay, I would I would say that I support us doing biannual. But for the staff to move to quarterly.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, I think biannual is okay, although I I agree also if we can have a statement saying we're working toward something that would be either more ongoing or quarter, that would be helpful. And I think really what it comes down to otherwise here is it gets back to the thresholds. And so I I I understood the deputy city manager. What this says is that an emergency purchase that's over thirty thousand has to be reported to the city council immediately. Some emergency procurements, if they're between ten and thirty, don't have to, and they only have to be reported in whatever the frequency of the reporting is, right?
Correct.
So again, there's there's a tiered system here where emergency procurement under ten doesn't have to report at all. Ten to thirty, once or maybe now we're saying twice a year. And then above thirty immediately, but then above thirty, up to fifty for non-emergency as part of the the biannual, if that's where we end up, right? So I mean, again, under this, some potentially substantial emergency things might not come to our attention very often, and that that's another aspect of the thresholds that I think we need to discuss. But I do agree with the biannual or biennial, whatever it's called.
Biannual.
But this is, I just make sure I understand, but this is saying all emergency procurements exceeding ten thousand dollars comes to us.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sorry.
But not immediately. All the only ones that are immediately are over thirty thousand.
Got it. Right. Okay. Councilwoman Dibala. All right. If they're not new hands, drop them. All right, let's keep going.
Good. All right, so now we're entering the section on competitive bidding and source selection. And we wanted to exempt, so currently the only purchases that are exempt from competitive bidding in the current code are those that are under ten thousand. We'd like to increase that to thirty thousand. So any purchases over thirty thousand have to be competitively bid.
I think we should just run through the changes, then we can go back to the thresholds and.
Okay.
I think it would be easier. So there if there if there is, let's just look at the changes that are substantive changes that don't, that aren't related to the.
shall file promptly with council a certificate showing such the necessity for the emergency, together with an itemized account of all expenditures. And emergency procurements are exempt from competitive bidding. Another competitive bidding exemption are sole source procurements. And before, there was no threshold on this at all. And now we've added in the fifty thousand dollar threshold to be consistent with the fifty thousand dollar threshold elsewhere. So we'll come back to that. Another new exemption that we'd like to add are immediate sale purchases. This is something that, for example, our library could take advantage of, particularly at the end of the fiscal year. There are a lot of companies know that, you know, governments have, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, maybe looking for discounts and they may have extra inventory at the end of the year. So this takes advantage of lower cost offers, allows us to jump on sales. And again, this is a common exemption that's used in in public procurement. So any questions on that? It's also going to be useful for our information technology department. All right. And then here's the new section on rider contracts or piggyback contracts that we've added in based on language from other municipal codes. And any questions on rider contracts? All right. And we've also added in a list of transactions that are exempt from competitive bidding. These are items that are difficult to competitively bid. So for example, you know, expenditures for travel, you know, that that's difficult to competitively bid, subscriptions, courses, seminars and conventions, membership dues. This is an example of an expenditure category that doesn't make sense to apply a competitive bidding threshold to. And so we've also included utility services, land purchases, employment contracts, temporary labor agreements, goods purchased from public auction, et cetera. So any questions on that, those exemptions? And my understanding is that Skip's team, again, compiled this list with reference to multiple other municipalities and their purchasing codes. All right. And again, this is a threshold question, but again, procurements that are less than ten thousand dollars, it were just requiring a reasonable effort by staff. So three quotes aren't required. But for purchases between ten thousand and thirty thousand, you have to get three qualified sources and submit that to the city manager in writing. But it does not have to be competitively bid if it's under thirty thousand. And those are, you know, so we've got informal bidding essentially, and then staff best judgment in in B. So any questions on those competitive bid exemptions based on dollar amount? All right. And then moving on to contract extensions. So for multi-year contracts, as we mentioned earlier, an initial extension can be made for one year. And that would be approved by the city manager, but subsequent extensions have to be approved by a city council. So the maximum length for a multi-term contract could is four years. And again, we have a cancellation allowed if funds are not appropriated. Any questions on extensions?
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes.
Just. So the difference between a multi-year contract and an extension is what? And is, and if I recall, one was three years and you're you're saying this one is four years?
Sure. So the the multi-term contract is when with one vendor, you can enter into a multi-year.
Right, back to there being the budget and all that. Okay.
Yeah. Where, I mean, I, Skip mentioned it earlier, that I think, you know, if you have even a contract that's less than one year, it can be extended. So it doesn't have to be a multi-term contract to be able to be extended. So this this extension is applies to all contracts regardless of of length.
Okay, so if the contract is multi-year contract for three years is approved and then the city manager extends, okay, I'm with you now. That's where you got the four years. City manager extends a year. That's four. Then it comes back to council if it's going to be proposed to be extended again. Thank you. I got it.
Okay. And then this was just to clarify that no department head shall order and obtain goods or services exceeding ten thousand dollars without first securing a purchase order. So that just kind of talks about, you know, we don't want city staff spending before they've gotten a quote and and had a purchase order issued, which purchase order process confirms that that money is available in the city account. So this is to codify that that process. All right. And so now we've reached the environmentally preferable purchasing section. And we have Skip's comment here that if council has concerns about placing this in administrative regulations as opposed to the code, given how cumbersome our process for passing administrative regulations is, he recommends that we leave this language unchanged and that we return later to make the administrative regulations switch and update.
That's right. And and the reason for that is is similar. It's just we don't want to get slowed down the procurement changes for the purposes of this discussion. And my recommendation would be that we just leave this as is. If there's a desire to address them, we can go ahead and start working on regulations and then have those in front of council before making any changes to this provision.
So the, yeah, the strike through section then wouldn't would remain and not be struck from the code.
That's correct.
Councilwoman Dibala.
I'm fine with moving it into regulation, but if I'm the only one, it doesn't matter that much to me.
Well, I think the the point was when we were going through this last week that some people raised is that our regulation process isn't, doesn't happen as quickly as we would like. And so wanting to revisit that and in discussing this with the city attorney, it seems like there's no downside to just keeping it here while we work on the regulations. So there's no lapse in when this, you know, or misunderstanding. So basically, we are moving to regulations, but we're just keeping it here for the time being as well.
To allow the time for the process that is in place to play out.
Right, because some council members last week expressed concern about how long it takes to put regulations in place.
Yeah, I mean, I will, I mean, I think, Councilwoman Dibala, I don't know if you know what year this was added, but I think this is a more up-to-date section of this code chapter. So it has been more recently updated as is.
Or more recent than two thousand, than two thousand, yes.
Great. All right. And then we have our living wage requirement. No changes there. Solicitation requirement, no changes there. And now we've reached the bonds and bid security section. Skip, can I ask you to speak a little bit about how this is used by other cities?
Right, well, so so the idea is you go through the bidding process and bid security is designed to protect. An easy example would be you end up, the city would want to accept a bid from someone who says that that for whatever reason, they can no longer perform at the time the city wants to accept it. And so then the city would end up paying more because they'd have to go to the next bidder, which is usually, assuming that the bid is the least expensive one, there'd be a difference in cost. So the bid security would allow, is designed to allow for the city to recover the difference in the cost. Performance security, you know, that that's, that's exactly, performance bond is exactly what it sounds like. And and the whole idea would be that if a contractor doesn't perform in the manner in which they're required under the contract, that the bond company would step in and either complete, secure someone to complete the project and or, you know, this is an oversimplified explanation, but pay for the difference in the cost. There's a lot more that goes into it than that, but it's 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 the standard process that's out there.
All right. So any questions or concerns about including a new section on bonds and bid security?
Councilwoman Dibala? No, nope, keep going.
Right. All right. And now we've reached the taxation section and there are no substantive changes here except for updates of antiquated techno terminology. So for example, this was old language left over from, I believe, pre-unification of the city when it was in still in two different counties. So now we can specify that it's Montgomery County. Same here. You had Prince George's and Montgomery, both mentioned. That's no longer needed. And this, I believe, is just an update to the correct number article reference. And then we're back to the Nuclear Free, chapter fourteen. So those are all the changes to the purchasing code chapter.
All right. So did anyone have any other additional changes or questions before we get to the different thresholds? Speak now, Councilwoman Kostick.
Yeah, so my question is about items that were in the budget previously that are under this amount. So one of the things in particular that I I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of is the police trailer, which was in the CIP when we adopted the budget and would be able to be moved forward on according to this. I think it was thirty-three thousand, if I'm remembering right. And I had discussed the idea of putting that on hold and considering that within the the context of the task force recommendations. And so I I just want to make sure that that happens and that it doesn't get purchased as a result of this ordinance when we had previously planned on going back, but now it's eligible to be purchased without that review. So I'm not sure where that fits in best. I don't know if that makes sense to actually go into the budget amendment or or somewhere else, but I just want to like that, make sure it doesn't get lost.
Sure. So yeah, I mean, that, so that the camera trailer was included in the adopted budget. Under the proposals we're making, it would not have come to council for review based on the dollar amount. So there would, but it would have been, it would be reported to council later because it's between the thirty thousand to fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Yeah, my 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 concern to clarify, my concern is that I I want us to have a discussion about whether or not it is the direction we want to go in terms of of public safety, since it involves camera surveillance, which is not something I think we do a lot of right now, if I'm understanding correctly. So I just want to, I want to make sure that that is considered within the larger context. And I had expected when we adopted the budget that that would come back to us for review and we'd have a chance to talk about it because we would need to adopt an ordinance in order to make the purchase. But because we're putting this in place, that will supersede that and there won't be that requirement to have the discussion. So maybe if there's a way to to just incorporate that, maybe not here, I'm not sure. maybe not here, I'm not sure that makes sense, but maybe in the budget amendment as something that will, we expect to return to have that discussion or something like that. I just like to make sure that that doesn't get lost and then purchased because it's, it's something that kind of is under that threshold and there isn't that discussion.
Sure. So I mean, I think you know, it does, it's an interesting question because it does, you know, if there's certain items in the budget that were approved and then let's say we adopt the code amendments as proposed and then are not subject to council approval, but still, you know, there's things going on in the city where council would like additional scrutiny on a certain category of expenditures. Then yeah, I guess my concern is that that might set a precedent of staff are never sure if what was approved in the ordinance, I mean, in the budget ordinance below a certain threshold will actually be allowed to move forward. And I think that that's part of why the purchasing thresholds are proposed so that you have that consistency so that it's not just, you know, it's all purchases below a certain threshold. And then you can, you know, you can always, if the threshold's too high, we can always lower it if there's concerns that arise through the reporting process later. But I, you know, I point out the council rarely rejects purchasing ordinances and rarely delays them, which I think is a good thing. I think that means that overall, you know, staff are proposing quality purchases. So I guess that that kind of falls into a gray area for me, Councilwoman Kostic.
If I can, if I can jump in, I feel like this is, if I'm understanding correctly, this is sort of a a trend, more of a transitional issue than setting a precedent. Because as we noted during the work session last week, a number of council members raised the fact that if they voted for this increase in the threshold, we wanted to see in the budgeting process, more information so that we were aware of certain purchases that were going to happen as we were doing the budgeting. I think what Councilwoman Kostic is raising is the fact that she voted for a budget under the assumption that we had the lower limits and that we would be getting this one item back. So I I think what we're, what we're seeing here is more of a transitional issue. And if we can somehow put a pin in that purchase so that it comes back to council and doesn't just move through, I believe we will be addressing this issue. And then moving forward, if we do vote to increase the thresholds, which after this many hours, I hope we do, that when we're going through the budget as council raised last week, that there's more attention paid to what, what is being purchased at the 30, 40, $45,000, $49,000 mark that wouldn't necessarily come to us so that when we voted on the budget, we knew more of those purchases. So, so I think, whatever way we can just put a pin in that one police purchase, so it comes back to the council. And I think the best way to do that is to ask the city clerk to put it on an agenda item. And so it comes back to us as an item for this. I'm not sure we have to do it in anything. I think we just add it to the agenda for September as a purchase. Do I have that correct, Councilwoman Kostic, that you're not, you're just talking about this one purchase?
Yeah, yeah. And you are correct, but it's not sort of a larger systemic question about us reviewing things after the budget, but just that we didn't adopt a budget with that assumption in place. And that particular one is of concern to me. I'll have to think it through. I'm a little uncomfortable adopting this without there being something that specifically notes that. I mean, I can certainly note it during the meeting. But you know, if an agenda item is the best way to move forward with it, that's, that's all right with me. Or I was just thinking maybe there, you know, if we add a whereas clause or something to the budget amendment that's made, since we're doing that at the same time, I don't know if that makes sense, but let's, let's think about it. But that's, I just want to make sure it's not something that gets lost in the mix.
It won't. I promise. I'll tell you, city clerk can put it on the September agenda. Go on right now. Councilmember Smith?
I just want to take the time to associate myself with Councilman Kovar's proposal on a lower threshold. I'm not saying that, you know, eventually the council can get to the proposed 50,000, but I think we should have a gradual step increase since we have started out so low at $10,000. I would be more comfortable in the 30, 35,000 ballot range.
Thank you. So just to make sure there's no other edits to be made, line edits to the code. So we can probably stop sharing the screen and I don't know if the acting city manager wants to pull back up the PowerPoint so people can see the threshold, have that in front of them if people need that. So I think Councilmember Kovar and Smith have provided some input on the thresholds. I don't know if other folks have other thoughts. So, Councilwoman Devalla? You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm comfortable with the higher numbers. I would consider a phase in if it, if it phases, if somebody wants to try to construct one that would end at 50,000, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily support just 30,000. Is that clear? I'm being clear anymore? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say I'll just associate myself with what is being proposed and I at least don't think I would support a phase in. I think it would get really confusing for staff and the code. And I'm comfortable with what is being proposed here and laid out, so. Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments on the, the idea of going with the 30,000. You know, it is a big jump and it does give me pause. But I do think the information provided here in terms of the, the number of of things that fall within that category and kind of the size and type that they are as well as just the burden on staff that it takes them away from doing other things that need to be done to, to come back with to us on some things that are really pretty, pretty small that we've already approved in the budget. Makes me more inclined to go with the 50,000 at this point. But I do appreciate the concern and obviously I do think we should continue to monitor this if that is what's adopted and make sure that it still makes sense and we're comfortable with how this direction is going. But that's, that's where I would fall right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seracy.
So I would echo Councilmember Kostic. Another thing that, so I'm okay with, with going up to the 50K. I think another thing to keep in mind is, you know, the internal controls that go along with ensuring that once we get over those thresholds, we're talking about competitive sealed bids or, you know, formal contracting processes and a number of the other internal controls that we have in place to make sure that money isn't just going out the door willy-nilly, kind of when you do the competitive stuff, if there are a lot more eyes on what it is that you're doing. And there's a lot more requirements in terms of how you document things. So that's something that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about going up to the 50K. Again, I just want to continue to reiterate that with, you know, with new thresholds comes great power and, and great responsibility. And that includes making sure that, you know, projects are clearly defined in the budget so that when council is making decisions about projects to fund, it is very clear what we're approving. Because I will say at a higher threshold, if I'm questioning it in the budget process, my answer will be no, we are not funding it. Because once we say yes, we won't, we likely won't see it again unless it's over that, up to that 50K. So I think that's the, the trade-off. And I think that's something important for staff to keep in mind as well as we move forward that, that there's going to be more onus on them to clearly define what their projects are in the budget. Otherwise, you know, things won't get funded. But again, I'm fine with going to that higher 50K.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, so I guess I would say first off, for me, it's not so much that it's crucial for us to approve these things as much as the vote is an opportunity for us to understand when they're happening. Because as the deputy city manager said, the acting city manager said, we don't generally reject them and we generally approve them. And so the, the staff is bringing quality products to us in most cases. So to me, it's not about these are awful or, you know, nefarious kinds of things that they're presenting to us. But it's a, it's an opportunity for us to check in and understand what's happening. And I think the comment that council member seriously just made is a really good one. That's not going to happen with the budget or insisting that we're saying that we want it to happen for the budget. That is going to create more extra work for staff than sticking with or having a more moderate increase, say to 30 instead of the 50. We're not going to have that information in the budget. There's no way we're going to have what, what you, what you just talked about as consistently and with as much detail as I think you want. And so I just think, you know, we're not going to get it. And if we say we have to have that level of detail, then it's really going to be a lot of extra work for the staff to do that. And because in many cases, these things don't even come together fully at the time that they're in the budget, they're developed later. That's understandable because, you know, we say, here's a priority, let's do something on redistricting, we better set the money aside for that, but we don't know what it's going to look like. Well, now we know what it's going to look like. And we also know, which I think is good, that there's going to be a partnership with another firm that specializes in outreach to underserved or marginalized communities. And just not knowing that and just being sort of handed the information later on. And, you know, and those are, that's the size of the contract, a redistricting contract or the one that council member Kostic is concerned about. In the future, I guess we got that one protected now and we're going to do something with it. But in the future, things of that size will not get that scrutiny and they probably won't be fully ready in the budget. And I think we'll just be missing some of those things. So this is not that I think that a dishonest or unethical proposal would be put through. It's not that, but it's us understanding sort of in a later phase in the budget, what it is that we're spending money on. And I think that's why the voting is important. And that's why, to me, a more modest increase is kind of in line with what some other communities our size have been doing makes more sense. Even with the, you know, more frequent reporting and ultimately maybe, you know, a fully transparent thing, when we get to that, that would be great. But I, but I think it's, it's helpful for us to see what it is we're spending our money on. And that's why, that's why I favor the lower number.
Yeah. All right. So unless anybody wants to change their viewpoint, what I, what I'm hearing is a majority of the council at this point is okay with what is being proposed. So again, if anyone wants to change their view, but always what I heard and kept track of. So I would ask that the city staff post an updated version of what will be the voting on next Wednesday by the end of the week that reflects the line item changes we made going through the code today and these, the proposed thresholds. And so if people want to contemplate that, and we'll have a first vote next week. Okay. Great. All right. Now let's move on then. We have two other work session items. The first is a FY 2021 budget amendment number one. I think we're staying with Ms. Clark to walk us through that.
Yes, give me one second. All right. All right. So we'll start with the budget amendment is our first of fiscal year 2022. It's also our first budget amendment ever to include American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so we'll have an update on our process for that funding as well. So getting right into it, you'll see the total. So I wanted to make a distinction, first of all, between the content of this budget amendment in terms of funding source and in terms of type of amendment. So we have 1.4 million worth of fiscal 2021 carryovers, which means that there were unused funds in the fiscal year that just ended that we were not able to spend and that we would like to spend in the current, the fiscal year that just began. And you'll see that for a general fund, that's 986,842. That's about, I mean, our budget amendment last year for carryovers for general fund was a similar size. For a general fund, we also have a stormwater carryover from our stormwater fund of 395,000 and then 30,000 from our cable grants special revenue account. And I'll get into the details of those in a moment. And then you'll see that another type of budget amendment that we're asking for is an expenditure increase in the adopted budget fiscal year 2022, and that total is 835,000. But, you know, obviously you can see the majority of which is ARPA funding. And we are asking for a general fund increase. And again, I'll get into that in a moment. So the carryovers are, in general, are for projects that were delayed or invoices that were delayed. So at times we, you know, wanted to make a payment in June perhaps, and we haven't received the invoice yet. So we'd like to make the payment in July or August. So those are the two main causes of, of carryovers. And you can see the breakdown in carryovers by department. I'm going to start with the departments that have the highest amount of carryovers. And we are joined by our planning director, Roz Grigsby, as well as our public works director, Daryl Wraithwaite. Public Works, you can see, also has a high amount of carryovers. And we'll get into the items in just a moment. So for Public Works, actually, Daryl, I see you just turned your video on. Would you like to run through the general fund and stormwater fund carryovers for Public Works?
Sure. As Jessica had mentioned previously, a lot of this carryover money has to do with funds that were not able to be spent in FY 21, in particular related to the ADA work. Because our funds were held until much later in the year, we only had a few months to mobilize our contractor and get the work started. They gave it a valiant effort, but there's, because they started so late, we had funds still available that were allocated towards the sidewalk retrofit work that we do annually. So a big portion of those funds we're requesting to move into next year. The sustainability manager, again, largely as a result of COVID and restrictions on the work that was done. There's a number of projects that were authorized or are expected to be done in FY 21 that were not able to be done. So she's requested those funds to be moved into 22 so those projects can be completed. A large portion of that, the council discussed in June with the award of a contract for some energy retrofit works and multifamily buildings of $70,000. So that had a very late approval and those projects have not been So that had a very late uh, approval and those projects have not been able to get underway, uh, which is um, seventy thousand of that hundred ninety two, uh, the others are broken out into various other projects of a similar nature. Projects that were anticipated but not able to get started or where there was reluctance on the part of the owners or businesses to move forward um, again with limitations uh, due to COVID and, and business um, business restrictions. Um, the last two items we purchased uh, with council approval or authorized purchase of the leaf vacuum and the pickup truck. Um, they uh, are much delayed based on the global situation related to computer chip components. Um, and so we're still waiting for those uh, pieces of equipment to be delivered. They're now anticipating a September or perhaps even October uh, timeframe for um, receiving those pieces of equipment. So the funding that had been allocated needs to be moved forward into this year. Um, and then same with the stormwater projects, there were a number of projects, most likely the most significantly, the Tacoma branch project that was not able to be got underway. So we're moving for uh, asking to move that project as well as other funding uh, in the stormwater budget for FY twenty one into twenty two.
Great, thank you Darrell. Um, and then I'll let Roz speak to the housing and community development general fund carryforwards. Um, and I have the list here. They were all for the planning division. So Roz, if you want to speak to that.
Sure, thank you. Um, similarly for public works, we got caught in supply chain problems on some of these. I think our best shelters and our um, streetscape improvements, you'll recall approving those expenditures. Um, we're stuck on the Ever Given in the Suez until last week. But um, we are now assured delivery the end of September, I think, for both the shelters and the um, benches and trashcans for New Hampshire Avenue. For the bike improvements project, it's, it's kind of an interesting uh, window into how our, our work takes shape. When we um, when we put the budget together and was, it was approved for FY twenty one, we had not yet been awarded the Cog grant for the Maple Avenue Complete Streets. And when we were awarded that, we realized that was a wonderful opportunity to get some good information and research done first before we spent money. We had lots of ideas about bike lanes and improvements that we could do, but it made sense to get the research first. As you recall, that was completed the end of June. The public space, we've actually renamed it, the Public Space Management Plan. I know council has um, been waiting for a long time and, and that's also kind of an interesting perspective of how we do our work. It intersects with a number of other things which caused some of the delay. One, of course, is that we wanted to build on the lessons learned from the Rec Center Public Engagement Project. And that report was available in May. And we wanted to make sure that as we move forward, we have a very robust process, which we've done a lot of work on, understanding and um, developing. We expect to be in front of council with draft recommendations that we will vet this fall, probably by November. And from that, we will move forward with um, looking at the ideas we've been working on for quite a while of pocket parks or various kinds of ways that we can activate the, the work we've, the background research we've done on proximity access and quality across the city. So it has incorporated a lot of the equity issues and the broader research we've been doing on how as a city we want to move forward on council's priorities. And so it, the delays have happened for a number of different reasons, but I think primarily it's trying to integrate these pieces that are essential for the success of these projects. The last list, thing on the list is um, kind of catch on categories that we like training and conferences and communications. We do have carryover funds for printing and publicity, which is, which we intend to use as part of our public outreach plans, public engagement moving forward, especially for public space. There is one more category that's, maybe it's on your next slide.
No, this is it.
Jessica, and if it's all right for me to just mention now and that is, yeah, um, an art project. So the arts division is also under my purview. And as you recall, we are, we have launched a public arts, public artworks project where art intersects with public works activities. And so it's a last payment on um, forms to press poems into concrete in sidewalks. And the shipment came partially damaged and so we made partial, and it came the very end of June. So we got the partial payment and we um, held the funds until the remaining plates had been uh, had been sent again, the new ones. And so there was some carryover for that as well.
Thank you Roz and Council, yeah. Uh, customers, I'll ask if you have any questions for Roz or Darrell now? Um, if you could raise those, because we're going to move on to other topics, I'd like to let them hop off.
Yeah, I had a question. Uh, I know it's really late. I appreciate, you know, um, on the sixty nine thousand, there are sixty nine thousand three hundred um, carryover, um, I guess for trainings, conferences and materials, it, that seems like an odd carryover for me. Because don't we, didn't we budget going forward this year in the budget we just passed for materials and trainings and other things? Like if we didn't do it in the last budget cycle, like why is it a carryover, I guess?
Right, no, it's a good question. Um, I, so I, there's one more category, uh, Jessica, that maybe you didn't break out in here and that was the transit head project money that's carried over.
Okay.
Anyway.
I didn't want to break out them all, but.
Sure, the, the short answer is that due to the disruptions of the last year, there were a number of things that didn't happen. Ordinarily, we would try to do um, a national conference once every three or four years. And so for instance, the conference money wasn't budgeted for FY twenty two with that in mind. But because we weren't able to go to any conferences this year, there was carryover money which might allow for that to do something like the American Planning Association Conference or um, we, we tend not to go unless we're presenting. So we um, try to represent the city well in those kinds of things. The publicity and printing money, which accounts for something like twenty thousand dollars of that, is really money we, we want to use for public engagement. What we learned, one of the lessons learned from the Rec Center experience is that you have to do it well and to do it well, it takes resources. And I think especially for the, the minor master plan and which we're partnering with the county and for the Maple Avenue Complete Streets and for the broader public space management plan with recommendations, we really want to hear from people across the city because these will, these projects will impact them. We have, our sole, are a very small staff. It's worth mentioning that planning is two point five full-time equivalents. And so um, we were short a person due to staff turnover this year, which meant we were a very lean division. Um, and so there's just some limits on what's possible.
Yeah, and I, thank you. I was able to pull up. I, I remember seeing the actual breakout um, in the material, so it's, it's fine. Thank you. Councilman Kostic.
Thank you. Um, I had a question about the sidewalk work. Um, is that I, if I'm understanding correctly, that would be added to the funds that we allocated for this budget year as well. So you're intending to do kind of just combine those two and do larger scale work this year? Is that right?
Yeah, uh, because we weren't able to do as much work as we had originally hoped to uh, with the, with the funds on hold for FY twenty one. Uh, we're, we're trying to not lose pace and um, complete all that work in FY twenty two.
Great, and it looks like us, like a hundred and fifty of that is focused specifically on SHA, SHA sidewalks?
Yeah, I think the breakout was one fifty for SHA, fifty for new sidewalks and traffic calming and a hundred thousand for ADA on city sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, all right, I think Roz, Darrell, before you fall asleep, thank you very much.
Thank you both. All right. So continuing with um, our carryovers in the general government category, um, we are requesting thirty one thousand nine hundred for human resources recruitment. And then I think it's like four thousand of that are for human resources contracts. Um, so as we'll discuss a little bit later in the presentation, our human resources department is facing several challenges, which meant that um, some of our hiring was uh, we're behind on some of our hiring. So we'd like to carry that over so that we can um, do better recruitment for the next round of hiring that we're about to do. Um, as well as um, the part of the contracts is um, assistance with HR systems, um, which we again didn't get to in fiscal twenty one that we'd like to carry forward. Um, a- across all divisions, I believe it was from city administration and city clerk and finance primarily. Um, there's carryovers related to conferences and training opportunities. So the fiscal twenty twenty two um, budget was a, a maintenance of effort budget. And so um, at least for city administration, so for instance, um, we used to be budgeted for training and conferences at nine thousand in the fiscal uh, twenty twenty two budget. We only have five thousand, but we're now fully staffed. We have a public administration specialist and the new city manager. And so um, we're ca- asking to carry forward five thousand um, that we weren't able to spend when we weren't fully staffed. Um, and then uh, moving down to ten thousand uh, for the finance division. Um, there's an investment consultation we wanted to do in fiscal year twenty twenty one that we weren't able to do, that we want to carry over so we can do it soon. Um, and then the city clerk has requested a four thousand dollar carryover to assist with upcoming recruitment for boards, commissions and committees that we expected to do in the previous fiscal year that um, will now carry over. For the police department, um, the thirty seven thousand seven hundred contracts carryover is for the police promotional process that just finished. We had several officers who were promoted thanks to a multi-day um, promotional process involving in-person assessments, exams, et cetera. So that, that money's already been spent, but there's an invoicing delay. So we'd like to carry that over to be able to pay the invoice. Um, for the license plate readers, so this was a, a human error, um, miscommunication between police and finance. The license plate readers are already budgeted in our capital budget um, in fiscal twenty twenty two in the adopted budget. So we already have this amount, twenty six thousand eight hundred in the capital budget. So we do not need to carry it forward. So that will be corrected um, for next week. And we've heard some concerns from uh, council members and we just heard the reimagining public safety task force presentation last night and they do have a recommendation related to license plate readers. Um, so we'll be holding off on that um, adopted budget purchase until that technology review has been completed. And then for communications, our city TV team did not get to accomplish all the upgrades to their technology they wanted to do. So they're requesting a thirty thousand dollar carry forward under cable grants. And then um, our communication specialist Donna Wright, we had several times where she and our IT director had to fix broken sections of the website and that involves uh, outsourcing part of that to a, a vendor in Baltimore. And they'd like to, they expect that, to need that assistance in the first quarter of fiscal twenty twenty two. Um, so what, they're asking for a five thousand dollar carry forward for that as well. That is the um, last slide on carryovers. So before we get to new budget items, are there any questions on carryovers?
No. Oh, Councilwoman.
I, I just want to say thank you for um, following up uh, with the chief about the license plate readers and getting clarification on the um, the policing invoice. I know um, that the chief and, and staff are taking the recommendations that we've heard last night seriously. Um, and so definitely appreciate you all following up on that.
Sure, yeah. And I think the license plate readers were one of those items that the um, task force members were still refining through the report release, which was on Friday night. So that was just a kind of by virtue of the amendment process and the task force process kind of overlapping. So um, yep, understood. All right, so moving on to new budget items. So for general fund, um, so I guess the, the easiest one is that council would already be aware of is the city clerk elections planning. So we, we do want to complete redistricting this fiscal year and you, you recently reviewed our um, vendor selection and um, contract is, is coming up. So we neglected to budget for this in uh, the adopted fiscal twenty twenty two budget, but it is a um, a really a essential expenditure for this year. So we would like to budget for that. The other two items are um, kind of, I would say, just pressing needs that we wanted to articulate to council. Um, again, at the time that we proposed the fiscal twenty twenty two budget, we didn't have full ARPA guidance. Um, and we also um, we wanted to make sure to do a maintenance of effort budget for that reason and, and due to um, other factors. So we did not ask for um, additional assistance for human resources. Um, however, that, human resources expenditures are not going to be eligible under ARPA. Um, and so we did want to propose this item as a general fund increase in part because it's an, it's an investment that will assist all departments and that will facilitate uh, the city's preparation for ARPA and really just our general provision of services. And that is a hundred and twenty five thousand for an upgrade to our HR system. So currently our HR team is working with Tyler Success Factors and Kronos, three different systems um, that are not well-integrated and this creates a lot of manual corrections and manual transfers. And those three systems don't even cover some of the functions that we need to make electronic in um, HR. So um, we're backlogged on certain um, basic HR functions and we think that upgrading the system will really help with all of that and that it's a critical juncture to do that um, with everything that the city has on the horizon. Um, the other item is the forty thousand for the HR intern upgrade. So we do envision that as a, as a permanent upgrade um, from a part-time to a full-time position. And again, that's to assist with the system's upgrade and consolidation, but also just to right-size our human resources uh, capacity because we've had recurring issues um, despite the best efforts of our HR director and our HR team um, for the past few years. And we'd like to again, take advantage of this opportunity to make that investment for the city. And similarly, the police dispatcher um, division where we've had a lot of staff turnover and that, that's been a recurring issue. Um, and most recently, it came to a head a little bit in that we lost another staff member. Um, and we may lose additional staff members and we've put out recruiting um, efforts but have had a hard time recruiting qualified individuals. So we'd like to make that division um, more structured by add it by doing um, salary increases for all staff in that division, but also create uh, taking one of the regular positions and upgrading it to supervisor. So that's, there's a promotional opportunity within that division and that's thirty thousand dollars. So those are the general fund increases. Are there any questions on those items?
Yes, we have a bunch of questions. Um.
Okay.
And let me get who had their hands up first. Um, Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, uh, thank you for the information. So two questions. One, and I apologize, I may have just missed this, but you were talking about the redistricting. But was that in the context of the election planning or is that something different? But was that in the context of the election planning or is that something different?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think the wording on this slide is a little bit confusing. So this is seventy five thousand dollars for the redistricting contract. For elections. Which on the ordinance that you recently viewed was actually fifty thousand dollars. The city clerk's original budget amendment request was for seventy five thousand dollars. So I think there's contingency built in. This amount may be able to be reduced somewhat. But the original budget amendment request was for seventy five thousand for the redistricting process.
Okay, but the resolution we adopted was around forty six thousand and we said up to fifty, right? So that's.
Correct.
Okay, so that was why I was confused.
This could probably be reduced, yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was an extra twenty five thousand that she was thinking would be needed for aspects of that. And so then the other question is, this money, this has to come out of reserves? Is this two hundred and seventy thousand? Is that right?
That's correct. We do expect, we won't know till the end of October. But it's, it could be offset by ARPA revenue loss reimbursement. But we're not going to count on that, which is why we're doing a general fund increase. Also point out that the three systems that I mentioned cost about eighty to ninety thousand a year. So there'll be a year of overlap while we migrate to the new system that's consolidated. But we will be eliminating ninety thousand in annual costs, so there'll be some offset there.
But for the, other than that potential generic ARPA connection. These purposes don't fall within ARPA.
No, they're too general, yep.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Devalla. Well, that was, that was a couple of my questions right there. So I remember talking about the hundred and twenty five thousand for the enterprise resource planning. A while ago. And the thought was that that might be ARPA-eligible and it's not, so I understand that. And then plus, as you point out, not this year, but in future years, it'll be one twenty five minus eighty.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that some cities are using ARPA funding for ERP migration. But it's more on the financial side because we're administering grants. And other payments related to ARPA. So it's easier to justify upgrades for a financial system, but for HR, it's a bit of a stretch.
Okay. What gives me a little more pause is, I appreciate that you would like to increase. That you would like to upgrade the intern and create a supervisor position. As soon as I hear positions, I think benefits and I want to know where the additional money for benefits. For a higher compensated person would come from. That's, that's one thing. Plus, if your intent is to carry this over for future years. I just point out that that's an increased cost in future years that we need to assume.
Correct.
And.
And the benefits are included in this amount of forty thousand.
Okay, so this does include the benefits.
It does, yeah.
For both of them.
I mean, we're cautious about adding new FTEs. It's, it's a, we felt it's an urgency, yeah.
Right, and there's, and unlike there, I thought there was another HR position that was getting added that is ARPA-covered. So this is not because this relates to the upgrading of the system?
It's for human resources generally.
In addition to, is it in addition to a?
Yeah, there's no, there's no human resources position that'll be ARPA-funded.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking about it and it's not ours eligible after all, okay. And then I had, was going to point out, I was going to ask also about the redistricting money. But that's okay for now, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
My question is regarding the ERP upgrade and migration. Do you foresee that this is going to last two years, three years? Before we have to make another major investment in this system? And does this hundred and twenty five thousand include annual maintenance? I guess the question is, what are we buying?
So we'll be purchasing an HRIS platform for HR functions. The reason we're labeling it as enterprise resource planning more broadly is that. An issue we're having currently is that payroll is done in our financial system. But there's a data transfer from the Kronos system. So we need to, we don't know yet which product we want to purchase. So it may be that we want to take, so our financial system is a part of Tyler Technologies, which is a bigger suite of products. And they offer HR products. So it may be that we want to build out their HR products or it might maybe that we want to purchase a separate HRIS platform. So we're still looking at all of that, but whatever we purchase needs to integrate with our Tyler financial system.
And did this proposal come directly from human resources or was it vetted by IT?
It was also vetted by IT. And is that, is that IT's recommendation?
Councilman Kostik.
Thank you. My question is about the police dispatcher aspect. And I, I understand your explanation was helpful in terms of kind of what this includes. You know, the recommendations from the task force just came in yesterday and obviously include some, some recommendations. Related to having alternatives to police, you know, calling nine one one and reaching police response. So I want, just want to make sure that this change with staffing and the change that would happen there. Doesn't prevent any of that from happening in the future.
It does not. So we're not adding any positions, so it'll be the same number of positions. We're just increasing the salaries slightly and making one of them supervisory to assist with talent retention, recruiting. And employee well-being, which was also one of the task force recommendations. You know, we've, we've had former dispatchers express in their exit interviews that, you know, the mental health impact. Of certain aspects of the position. And so we think that this will, Police Command feels that this will help with that, so, which was also touched on by the task force.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this, it seems to me an incredibly difficult position and I can definitely appreciate that, that aspect of it. I would just ask as this process goes through that it's looked at within kind of that more holistic context. And planning for other alternatives that are in place in the future.
Councilmember Kostik stole my thunder a little bit. One of the things though that I do think might be helpful with this position upgrade. Is that you're creating that supervisory position. Because I know that there were a lot of. Aspects of the recommendations that related to the ability to kind of separate dispatch. Expand dispatch to include non-emergency kinds of things. How could we figure out how to structurally think through. The dispatch system that we have in the, in the city and who's over it. And so I do think, I do think that having a supervisory structure in place. Might actually set us up more nicely for if, if there is a decision to make some organizational structural changes. Because then they already have supervisors in place and it, there's already a little bit of a structure. Whereas right now, everyone, is, am I correct in that all of the dispatchers report directly to?
To, yeah, one of, one of Police Command.
Yeah, and this, because our dispatchers are not officers. They actually are reporting to non-police, so they are non-police supervisors. And I think that might actually help, frankly, in thinking through some of the recommendations that the task force has made. Again, I, you know, I think that I'm okay with this, with this, moving forward with this. Because I think long-term, this might be really helpful as we're kind of thinking through not only retention. But also, you know, organizational structure going forward.
Well, I think the, I don't really have anything else to add from what my colleagues have said. I think there's just one other thing that we talked about in terms of figuring out where money is coming from. In terms of also the ARPA funds, because I know. How I say this correctly at eleven thirty at night, but I know like we, we talked about before being able to. You know, if we can spend money, like spend ARPA funds on something that frees up other money that we can then move over. So like if we could use this, say for example, for something else in the finance department or something like that. Then that, we can use that money that we didn't spend in finance on HR or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so we didn't want to charge the dispatcher upgrade to ARPA. Because we think it's something that, that needs to happen, continue beyond ARPA. We didn't want to, you know, do an ongoing charge there, even though public safety personnel are, you know, ARPA-eligible. So that, that's, yeah, that's the reason. All of our ARPA personnel are term limited. So they won't be continuing past the end of the ARPA performance period.
Oh, okay. Do we have more on this or?
Nope. We're moving on to ARPA new budget items. All right, so as council may recall. Back in, when we were adopting the fiscal twenty twenty two budget. The ARPA guidance had not been released, so we put some tentative estimates into the adopted budget. We included a revenue loss reimbursement of about one point two million. We also included eight thousand for a facade improvement grant. And a hundred thousand for a document management platform that will assist us with ARPA tracking and reporting and documentation. So that is what is currently in the adopted budget is one point, about one point three million worth of ARPA funding. We recently received our first transfer of the ARPA amount. That's, and that was confirmed that the total ARPA amount that the city will be receiving is seven point four million. So for this budget amendment, we've made, we are proposing a couple initial personnel hires. As well as housing eviction prevention. Funding as just our most pressing purchases that are needed. So those will total to five hundred and sixty five thousand in terms of an expenditure increase for ARPA. Which means that after, if this budget amendment passes, we'll have spent one point eight million. Of the seventeen point four million so far. And before I get into the, the different items that make up that five hundred and sixty five thousand. I just wanted to give those watching just a quick refresher of ARPA-eligible uses. So there's four main buckets, public health and economic impacts. And the list of eligible uses under that category is very similar to what the council envisioned. For the COVID nineteen Emergency Assistance Fund in that it's very focused on direct help and assistance to vulnerable residents. And businesses. And for that reason, this is the most restricted expenditure category. In that you must show that the money is going to those who it was intended to serve. So we've been doing a lot of data visualization around this category. Because we have to show that where we're investing, there was a pre-existing social vulnerability. Or pre-existing inequality or economic harm. So we're going to have to demonstrate that to the state and to Treasury. For premium pay, that is for extra pay for employees in hazardous conditions. That can be retroactive. We, as a city, did provide hazard pay to our employees at the beginning of the pandemic or for part of the pandemic. And that is, it's functions in a very similar manner to our hazard pay. And then revenue loss is compensation for revenue the city would have normally received. And as I said, we've already included some of that in our adopted budget. And we'll be including more at the end of October when we have our final revenue numbers for the previous fiscal year. And then finally, investments in infrastructure. And those are a lot less restricted than the public health and economic impacts category. So it's broad enough, it's based on EPA revolving fund eligibility requirements. So we believe that we'll have a lot of flexibility throughout the city to make investments in infrastructure. And we will not have to demonstrate necessarily social vulnerability for that category. And just a reminder in terms of where we, where this budget amendment is falling in terms of the ARPA timeline. So again, when we passed, when we created the budget and passed it back in April. We included a very limited amount of ARPA funds because we didn't have much guidance. Then the interim final rule came out in mid-May on eligible uses. And we also put all the steps in place to make sure that we would receive the funds, which we have this week. And then subsequent to the interim final rule coming out. Most of June has been spent on eligibility analysis. And trying to figure out what would be most important to purchase in this budget amendment. So staff have attended NLC and GFOA webinars to make sure that we understand the reporting requirements, et cetera. We've been working on creating potential project lists by department. We've been doing data visualization, so as council might remember. We've already mapped the CDC Social Vulnerability Index for the city, which is going to be very useful. There's a lot of language in the interim final rule that references the CDC Social Vulnerability Index. And so we'll be using that, but also just our census data visualizations will be useful as well for census tracks and block group. And so we've been doing work on that. But again, we've been focused on figuring out how to, what to put in this first budget amendment. And then in what we envision doing in August is hiring for critically needed positions that I'll get to in a moment. We still have not received the state reporting requirements. We, so, you know, you have to take the, the federal reporting requirements that are included in the interim rule are still somewhat vague. And so this, we're really waiting for the state reporting requirements to come out. And that will inform, you know, some of our spending. We want to work with the new city manager to finalize staff recommendations. And also to evaluate other federal funding sources, because there's a lot of sources available. We want to see how the other funding sources might integrate with the ARPA money that we already have. But come September is when we'll really roll up our sleeves to develop a robust spending plan. And that's going to be with our new city manager and with all stakeholders involved. Some members of the public, our partners in the city, as well as city council. And so that will all begin in September and that is why this budget amendment is somewhat limited in its asks. And we will do a second budget amendment in September. So this budget amendment, the items that we've asked for, the five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Is really about building up our internal capacity, getting our ducks in a row, making sure our house is in order. So that we can administer ARPA funds effectively. And we can do the kind of careful planning and spending plan development that we need to do as a community. So this is language pulled directly from the interim final rule. In that Treasury recognizes that this is more money than federal funding. Than a lot of communities like ours have ever seen. It's an unprecedented amount of money. And so there does need to be a ramping up period or a gearing up period. For us to be able to administer it effectively. So I'm not going to read all of these, you can read it here. But Treasury recognizes that responding to the public health and negative. um, responding to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic and administering services requires substantial commitment of human resources, which is why, um, they are allowing, um, localities to spend ARPA funds to cover the portion of payroll and benefits of employees that are, um, spending time on administrative work. Um, that includes, uh, payment dispersment and new grant programs, et cetera. They're also allowing us to make investments to improve efficacy of program administration. Um, so that includes data analysis, targeted consumer outreach, um, improvements, technology, infrastructure, um, and, and methods of impact evaluation, um, as well as consultants for effective management and oversight, as well as comply, li- legal and regulatory compliance. So our initial budget amendment asks are related to these categories within the interim final rule. Our first ask is to hire an ARPA coordinator. Um, again, this is a, a large amount of money, as we all know, and it's kind of like adding a small division or, or department to our city. Um, so we do need additional capacity to be able to do that. We envision the ARPA coordinator as functioning like a grants coordinator or portfolio manager. But there'll be more than that in that this is such a multi-stakeholder effort, um, that we want the coordinator to help us map out funding priorities that really are based on assessments of need, um, in our community. And to that end, um, we've also included a hundred thousand in this budget amendment, um, for early community engagement around eligible uses. And we'll rely, if, if approved, we'll rely on the ARPA coordinator to, um, make proposals around that. Um, we expect the coordinator to participate in work sessions with senior leadership council and other stakeholders to review and approve potential projects, facilitate cross-departmental communication and collaboration on a, even on a regional level around our ARPA effort. Um, and then obviously a key part will be ensuring compliance, tracking the quarterly reporting that we'll have to do, as well as the annual reporting, and providing just up very clear, fully transparent updates on our progress towards spending goals, um, as well as community development outcomes. So that's the first request. We also would like to expand the finance department, um, capacity to, to be able to help us process and administer the funding. Um, so ARPA allows you to hire to pre-COVID staffing levels. And pre-COVID finance had a part-time position that was fully occupied with assisting with payroll and accounts payable and answering phones. Um, so we'd like to restore that part-time position, but also, um, make it full-time to assist with ARPA documentation and reporting with the ARPA coordinator. And this will be a term limited position. So this will, this position will disappear, um, at the end of the ARPA period. Um, and then we also are asking for a hundred and fifty thousand, um, for rental assistance for our housing division. This was the estimate that our housing director provided. Um, and this is just an amount to get us through September, through to the September budget amendment, when we'll have, um, a larger request related to housing assistance. Um, and on a related note, we will be hiring a new economic development director, um, in August. And then finally, we are requesting funding for a software developer. This will also be a, a position that will, um, likely disappear at the end of the ARPA period. Um, but this is something that really will, w- we believe, increase our resiliency as an organization um, in that it is a position that our IT department has been asking for, for several years now. Um, we have a lot of different softwares across our city. We have a lot of different departmental needs that are not being met by the proper software or that need to be met, um, need, need help and assistance in selecting the proper software. Um, we also don't want to keep spending buying off-the-shelf products. We want to be able to develop our own, um, customizations rather than, um, outsourcing that. So we envision this role as someone who will build up city, existing city platforms, um, manage application integration. Um, the document management platform is something that this role can, um, implement for ARPA tracking. This role can also help with the website upgrade, um, and testing software. I think GovQA and MyTKPK is a great example. Um, that is a, a CRM product that we may not want to keep and that if we do keep it, it needs a lot more work. Um, but really housing and community development, um, the police department, public works in particular, um, need a lot of assistance in this area. So this is one of our requests in terms of an immediate need that we have to set the stage for future ARPA spending. So to close out, um, just at a high level here, um, want to keep in mind that the overall, uh, spending principle for ARPA is that these are one-time funds. So we have to target them to one-time expenditures. That's why these are time limited positions. Um, and a lot of the professional associations that we're looking to for expertise on how to spend this money really advise that we look at ways to make investments that also lead to long-term or systemic improvements. And so, um, we'll be looking to do that. And our goal over the next few months is to create a spending plan that helps households, small businesses and nonprofits respond to the public health emergency and its negative economic impacts while also making strategic investments in the city's workforce, public infrastructure and fiscal health. So I'll stop there.
See, Councilmember Smith has his hand up.
Uh, can we see the, uh, slide that La Salsa ARPA proposed, um, items?
Sure. The, oh, how do I go back? So let me go back for some reason. Give me one second. So did you want to start here?
Uh, good, good. It has like the matrix. Yes, that.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, I gotta just say from the beginning that I am disappointed that, you know, the, the initial outlier, uh, from the ARPA funds, uh, only includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will actually touch, uh, the residents, uh, of Tacoma Park. You know, I, I, I do understand that this money was, uh, proposed to help municipalities, uh, become whole because of the pandemic. But there are still a lot of people that are struggling. And, uh, only budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I just think is, you know, just, just not enough, um, you know, whether it's food insecurity, uh, childcare. I mean, there's just so much going on out in the community. And we need to see if we can spend more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for this first tranche of, um, ARPA funds.
Sure. So I, I think you're absolutely right, uh, Councilmember Smith, that that, that has to be our priority. I think the, the challenge we were up against over the past, I guess, month and a half since we've known what we could spend the money on, um, is that it's the wide, um, latitude that they're giving us in the eligibility requirements means that there's a lot of different things that we could do. Um, I think as, you know, I, I use as an example, with the COVID nineteen emergency assistance fund, it's also a question of staff capacity in that that was about just under seven hundred thousand dollars. And it took us a year and a half at our current staff capacity to be able to spend that. And we actually still haven't fully spent it. There's still about two hundred thousand dollars remaining. So I think that shows you that we wanted to get that money out the door as quickly as possible. But just given staff capacity, it took us a while. So I think we don't want to rush into, um, what our community development investments will be. We're losing our economic development director. Our housing director is really stretched to capacity. So in terms of who would administer a food insecurity program, for instance, we don't have a staff member to do that. So we really have to think holistically. And I was, you know, listening to a, a panel of mayors a few weeks ago. And one of them said, you know, the, we want to get to helping the community immediately, but we do have to put our own oxygen masks on first, right? So we can't promise new programs that we don't have the staff capacity to deliver on. So, so, but also I think, you know, to come out with a full spending plan, you know, a month and a half, um, after we found out about the eligible uses, um, would not be, there, there needs to be more of a community dialogue around how it will be spent and a, and a needs assessment, which we're in the process of doing and which we'll need the new city manager on board to do. We'll need the new housing economic development director to do. We'll also need the, um, I'm not the, I'm sorry, the new economic development director and the new housing and community development director on board. And we're very excited, um, about them coming. And again, we're gonna roll up our sleeves and, and come up with a great spending plan in September.
And, and, you know, I, I appreciate all that. That's all part of the process. But I'll just say that, you know, I don't know if people can wait. You know, I mean, people have needs now and us ramping up and hiring people and all that other stuff. Yeah. I mean, all municipalities have to do that. But that does not stop people from being hungry. That does not stop people from not having, you know, childcare, diapers in the home. I mean, just the basic stuff that people are experiencing right now because of the pandemic.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right about that.
Um, Councilmember Bala.
Council, you're, you're on mute.
Sorry. Couple of questions about timing and, and, um, totals. Um, so I, I, I get what you're saying about putting your mask on first. I'm, I'm impatient also to get out the door. Um, the positions you're proposing are foundational positions. I understand that. Um, are benefits included in these numbers?
They are.
And you gave.
This would just be for the first year.
Right. And so over how many years? So when we subtract from the grand total, once we know what the grand total is, um, how much are we subtracting? So how are we, how long are we running these positions out for? Three years?
So, yeah, at least through December twenty twenty-four. It could be as late as twenty twenty-six, but at least through twenty twenty-four. But I, I'm, we're deliberately only budgeting for, for one year at this time. Um, again, because we have to have further discussion in August and September. But we would like to start, to at least start, um, seeing what kind of candidates that we get.
Right. And then that leads me to timing, um, which I think was a question that Councilmember Cersei had, um, written in one of her comments. Um, what, what do you see as the timing of these positions relative to, and which, and which Councilmember Smith just alluded to? What do you see as the timing of these positions relative to making decisions about the, the buckets of money that we wanted, the, the types of things we wanted to do?
And when we. Sure. Yeah. So the ARPA coordinator, we think the earliest we could get them on board, given everything that HR is facing, would be, um, end of August or early September. So which, you know, we would like to already have them on board, um, but, uh, and then, um, you know, I think the other positions, you know, end of September, early October.
Um, so then additional question, is there any short-term contract? That there may not be, that can help HR in the short run to get this done?
There, yeah, I, I think that would be one option. I mean, I think that's included in the hundred and twenty-five thousand general fund ask is, um, the assistance with the, the, uh, system upgrade. But yeah, in terms of temporary assistance, um, you know, they could do data entry, but we, we really think that HR needs a, a, a serious position, um, to move the department forward.
Right. But that's not one of these asks, or is it? I'm confused.
It's, it's, the general fund increase was a HR intern upgrade. So that was back in the general fund slides. We're not, it's not ARPA funded.
Okay. And so it's to help HR move, but it's, but it's not, it's to help HR move forward in the short run, but it can't be ARPA build?
It could be. I mean, well, HR needs assistance. So if, if council's not comfortable with a, a permanent upgrade to the HR intern, we would accept, I guess, temporary, um, uh, we could make it a term limited position. But we, we do feel that, we made it a permanent position because we feel that even if HR had a great system, they would still be slightly understaffed.
Mm-hmm. Understood, but it might be, I might be more interested in that short-term arrangement. Um, okay, those were my questions about the timing of, of staffing, staffing up. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna tick this down for now.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, and thank you for all the information, Jessica. Appreciate it very much. So one question I had was, a lot of other communities are doing the same thing probably, right? And so how hard do we think it's going to be to, to find people? Um, or is it going to be super competitive? Uh, are we?
That's a great question. Yeah, I, I don't have a sense yet, um, but that certainly is a concern.
So the sooner we can advertise and so on, the better, right? Or start processing these. Um, and, and on the specific benefit, so for the eviction, um, is there some data from the housing department that we can see that sort of explains where the hundred and fifty thousand came from?
Um, we can provide that in a follow-up.
And, and do we know is, are the moratoria ending at a certain date? Um, I've, I've lost a little track of that.
Yeah, I think it's, I believe it's mid-August.
And so it's certainly conceivable, if not likely, that when we get to the next round of this in September, I mean, that hundred and fifty could go pretty quickly and we might need to get more, right? So.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And the only other thing is, Councilmember Smith mentioned this as well, is food security. And so would it be possible, or would this also require, or come, come up against the same staff bandwidth question that, that you were raising, but would it be possible for us sooner to, through outside contractors, uh, that are already doing the, the food distribution to start channeling that in? Because I know, for example, I mentioned it last week, you know, um, one of the local groups, they just found their county funds, portion of their county funds cut off around five thousand dollars, uh, a week. Now, I understand we can't just hand out money without going through a process. And so maybe there's as much staff work involved with that as there would be administering a program. But it seems like it would be a little less. And so I wonder whether we could seize on some of these groups that are doing it. And we, we probably know, uh, uh, among all of us who they are. And we could put out the word and, and kind of do that. Because I, I do agree with Councilmember Smith on that point that in terms of something like food security, having to wait another couple of months is an ideal. That's the one that's in addition to the housing piece, the evictions that really stands out there. So is, is that something we could conceivably do?
I, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's certainly on, absolutely is on the table. Um, I mean, it, what you're describing kind of reminds me of our community quality of life grants. You know, I, I think Jen Hale is a part-time person, does a fabulous job administering those funds, which are just a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, and if you think about that, the process that she goes through in terms of vetting who we're giving grants to, um, you know, we may want to do something similar or, you know, we may have a partner, um, housing may have a partner already in mind. Um, but we, we have not had that discussion yet again.
I mean, is that something that could be done sooner than waiting till mid to late September? I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Um, possibly, yeah, possibly.
Well, I think it'd be great to think about that. Again, I understand you're doing a ton, so it's not about that. It's just that that's one of those needs that really jumps out. So, uh, maybe we can talk more about it. Thank you.
Sure.
I guess the, the question I would have too, and I, I don't know if this is impacts is, we have to document, like, as Jessica put up there, where these, these dollars can go. So I just, I want to make sure we have a system in place so that even if we are identifying groups and providing them funds, that we're still going to have to track that then those funds were going to, um, those who are most vulnerable. So I, I just want to make sure we have our system. So I, I just want to make sure we have our systems in place because, and I, I agree with everything that was said, like, the need is great, like, and we and we do also need to do this ramp up to make sure that we're, we're following all the rules. And we still don't have, I want to underscore too, that what Jessica said, we still don't have the state reporting rules. So I just, it's, it's a lot of money. And it's, you know, more than half of our annual budget. And I just want to make sure that we are putting in the place the, the appropriate processes and systems so that at the end of the day that we don't end up doing something that.
I, I agree 100%. I, I think all I'm saying is, if we're going to say there's one or two categories really urgent, in addition to eviction, I would put food security. That, that's, that's what I'm saying.
No, definitely. And I think if, you know, if Jessica, before we vote on this budget amendment next week, is talking to the staff and we want to another pot of money in that so that before September, they have that available in the month of August, we could definitely do that. I know we still have other money that we've already, in the COVID-19 fund that I, that I still think hasn't been fully spent. So, but I think that could be something. But I just wanted to underscore that. Like, I, I, I very much appreciate all the work the staff doing and the urgency. But the fact that we haven't even gotten the state reporting requirements still makes me a bit nervous, spending money quickly. So, Councilmember Cersei.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. This money will be audited. Period. So whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're following the rules and it, it works with, for us if we make sure that we know what the rules are completely around allocating these funds before we spend them. Because one thing I know about the government is they have no problems with taking back their money. If we spend it the wrong way, we will have to pay it back. I'm also really concerned about staff capacity. I get it. The need is great. We have a lot of people in need. Our HCD staff have been going non-stop for nearly two years. We have to staff them up in order to ask them to be able to spend more money. Because they have been going since the start of the pandemic. We are just trying to get our, the manager in place. We're losing our economic development manager. We lost a planner in the process. We just got a new one. So I, I just want to encourage us to be mindful. And I think that acronym that Jessica shared was a really appropriate one. You have to secure your oxygen mask first before you can help other people. Otherwise, you're no good. And so if we can do what we need to do to make sure that we're staffing and providing staff with thing, with what they need in order to appropriately execute these dollars, it is going to save future councils, or us, if we're all here, a lot of headache down the line. So I, 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 I understand the need is great. We need to get out there. But I want to make sure that we're getting out there with staff that's ready to roll and processes that are ready to count every single bean that goes out.
All right. I think, is that, do you have enough direction, Jessica, from, all right?
Yep, that's helpful.
Terrific. So we will, we'll have our first vote on this next week. And we have just one other item. Man, I was trying to get this in under midnight, but we're not going to do it. It's discussion of resolution to accept the Local 400 reopener agreement and resolution regarding wages for staff not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. I, I let Jessica go over this, but I, I think this was, we've discussed this before. This was part of the budget. So no, nothing new here, but Jessica, do you have anything else you want to discuss?
Yeah, sure. So, so in a normal pre-pandemic year, we would typically budget a employment cost index, ECI, you know, inflation adjustment plus a step increase plus the distinguished performance increase. So for example, in our, I leave our fiscal 2020 budget, that was budgeted at a, a four and a half increase for salaries. For the, for last fiscal year, given the uncertainty around the pandemic, we ended up just doing a flat one and a half percent increase and we didn't do steps and we didn't do distinguished. And so the proposal before you is similar, again, because there's a lot of financial uncertainty. Due to the pandemic, we're proposing a one and a half, I'm sorry. Wait, last year was one and a half, one and a half percent. This year, we're proposing a 1.8%, which is based on the, which is the ECI salary adjustment amount. And that increase has been approved by Local 400. And we'd like to apply it to non-union represented employees as well. And we're still waiting on AFSCME wage reopener negotiations, which are entering mediation next week. But we would like to move forward with the 1.8 increase for Local 400 and non-union staff. And in the fiscal 2022 budget, we budgeted 2%. So this would actually be less than what's budgeted. We included a half percent contingency amount.
Any questions? Councilwoman Devalla, do you have a question? You look very puzzled.
I'm puzzled because I can't find the right button to push. Raise my hand. Okay, so this sounds, this sounds similar to something that was informally discussed at one point. And so has anything changed recently? Or is this, this is?
No, this is just the resolution for, formal.
This is the resolution formalizing. Okay.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing, right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd also add that we're, we're in the third year where we, we need to do a wage study. So a wage assessment will be taking place this year as well, just.
For some reason, I thought this was talking about re, beginning negotiations or reopening, as it were, for the next year. Now, I'm, I'm a year ahead of myself. Never mind.
Yeah. Cool. All right. This will come back to us for a vote next week. So thank you all for all the hard work tonight. Thank you, Jessica, for shepherding us through it. Be on the lookout for the updated purchase ordinance that will be posted later this week. We have a number of voting items next week. So, and two more, two more council meetings before August recess. And make sure, if you know anyone who wants to apply for the youth council, that they do so. All right. Thank you, everyone. And we're adjourned. Have a good evening, or have a good morning.